Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Monday, April 27th, 2020 Budget Work Session. What time is it?
Six.
6:34. First, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
It's been moved in proper second. Any discussion? If no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it. Now down to our second invocation, Councilmember Bill.
Father, in the name of Jesus, we just come to thank you for all your blessings. We thank you for this time that we've come together here tonight. We pray your blessing upon each and every one of us. We pray that you give us wisdom and understanding that we might know how to take care of the business of this county. Father, we also pray that as we look at this budget for this next fiscal year, we always remember those who are struggling and for those who seem to always be left out. So, Father, we pray that you might give us wisdom to do the right thing and always take care of those who, again, who seem to not be able to do that on their own. Lord, we love you. We thank you. Again, we ask for strength and grace. Father, we also ask that you protect this country and keep this country safe. This coronavirus is a plague upon this nation. But, God, we rely on what your words say. So we thank you, and we, again, we pray your blessings. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Bill. For discussion is our fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. We'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Taylor again.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Try to make it through a little better than last time. We had somewhat of a false start last time with the technical difficulties. I will paraphrase. We'll read through the whole budget letter that I prepared, but I do want to set the tone for the budget that we prepared and let people know the context for how we came up with the numbers and what we're proposing. Essentially, we ended last year's budget quite well. The county is fiscally strong. We ended up with $1.9 million increase in our net position. That means now we are at $38.6 million in net assets over our liabilities. We also ended up the year with $507,000 in more revenues than we did expenditures. So, again, we ended up last year quite well. However, we do anticipate revenues being down this year. We think we're going to be down considerably in revenues, a million to a million and a half potentially. And most of that's coming from VC Summer, the changes that have occurred out there. So, we do need to be more fiscally conservative this year. We are not proposing really any capital investments of any large magnitude nor any new projects this year. Because, again, we are afraid that we're going to be down in revenues. And it is always important that we protect our revenue so we can provide the services, our core services that keep people safe, our fire, our EMS, our sheriff's department. We have to support those services. One of the things that we faced this last year, too, was we had a very good year with economic development, which is very robust, and we're very proud of that. However, it puts us in a position where now we have very little product to sell. We can't continue with economic development unless we invest in ourselves. And so, we have looked to try to, again, build our cash revenues, our reserves, so that if we have a company that comes, that we have the money there to offer the incentives to, again, continue bringing new investment, new jobs to this county, which is critical. We also, in order to be able to do that, we have to invest in ourselves in infrastructure. And infrastructure is extremely expensive to invest in, I know. We're looking at a $30 to $35 million investment in a sewer plant in order to be able to continue to have the county grow. We're hoping the state will participate in a fair amount of that. That's the only way we can make it work. But we have to have the cash reserves in order to be able to match what the state's willing to put forward. So that's the context of us, of what we were working within to put this particular budget together. Our process, I think, has been, this time, with having to work within the coronavirus situation, to ask each council member individually to call us with questions you may have had concerning the budget concerns as far as things that we were allocating or not allocating toward. And we've put down most of those responses that we've got, and I think it's collected those in Laura. And that's, we're going to present a good many of the questions and kind of our responses to those questions as part of the budget process. Then we'll have our different department heads come and, again, make the case for why they need what they need. And I'll give you.
Could I interrupt before I end?
Sure.
Talking about the infrastructure. We need those sites open in the industrial park. Those roads and bridges and stuff that needs to be redone. Well, it's been done to alliance to make them get off the behinds and go to work.
I think that is something we have to discuss during the executive session.
Well, it's been in discussion for months already, so.
That's one of the things you'll see reflected in the budget, that we do have considerably more in legal fees this time. As we get into the budget, you'll see that than we did last time. And that's one of the main reasons we do, is because we do anticipate having to fully go to court with lines to make them fix what is broken there.
Good question.
Can y'all hear me okay? Y'all can hear me okay? I'll just kind of start over. Where, as Mr. Taylor said, revenue is essentially flat this year. Our use of fund balance has gone up. It's $5,548,000 this year. It's up about $1,330,000 from last year. Typically, we've been fortunate enough in the past to not ever really have to pull from that, even though we've had to budget it. But we sure don't want to continue making that dependence greater. Some of the major contributing factors to that, this year's budget, which are typically non-recurring things. We have about $1,300,000 in capital, which we really squeeze that down as far as we think possible. We've budgeted some money for the water sewer property. And we've increased our grant match to allow for some economic development and also to include the council on aging that we, you know, y'all voted on a couple meetings ago. So those are some of the bigger factors that, you know, that are non-recurring that kind of add to having to use that fund balance. An overview.
Question, Mr. Chairman. How much money do we have in fund balance?
In fund balance?
Yeah, the total.
And that's just a snapshot in time. It fluctuates up and down. When it's at its lowest, what is it typically during the course of the year?
Plus, in order for us to make it, they wouldn't be able to make it without the money from VC Summer.
Is there, I'm sorry. Is there a recommended minimum that we should keep in there?
Most of the time, it's three to six months. But as you are aware, it sounds like I'm old. Anytime we have, anytime we have the audit done, they always comment on how good our fund balance is, and we probably have about close to six months worth of fund balance. So, yeah, we're in good shape when it comes to that.
Most counties do about 3%, I mean, three months up there.
All right. So, transitioning over, excuse me, to expenses. Some things that are built in the budget. The first section in your notebook, there's a little sheet that's budget implications. And I'll just go over this at a broad overview. And these are some things that happen each year with retirement increasing and different things like that. One of the main things is changing the structure of retiree insurance. And Mr. Carter's going to talk to that shortly. But that's just our structure of what we do for our retirees after people have certainly worked a certain amount of service, and then they retire. Another item that's built in this year, human resources developed a tiered scale rather than a flat across the board. And this is to try to accomplish where on the lower end of the salary spectrum. It ends up costing pretty much the same, but I think we accomplish more with that. And Brad, do you want to talk about that a little bit, since that affects every department?
Sure. Basically, I guess everybody's got the slides that we handed out. I'll just try to give a little overview there why we do cost of living adjustments in the public sector. The next section kind of gets to the meat of it. As you can see there, since 2014, the SSI index has increased 8.4%. You've got all these driving factors that go up every year. And it's, you know, right here in my bottom line, it says the county has issued 5% in COLA raises since 2014. So you see the Bureau of Labor Statistics there is saying 3.1% increase in private sector earnings in only one year, 2020. And also every year, well, not every year, but frequently, we get hit with retirement system increases that the employee has to contribute to also. You get insurance increases. The CPI has gone up, will go up 2.5% projected to this year. So, just to give you a little difference over what we have done over the past several years, you know, the county has given a one-time bonus. And I think it, I don't have the years here, but I think about two or three of the past six years have been given a one-time bonus. And that's good, but it's a one-time bonus. And it doesn't increase the salary, it doesn't progress the salary throughout the pay band. So what happens is you fall behind, your salaries fall behind to where the market is going up. Your salaries are staying the same, if that makes sense. What we've tried.
They get 2% raise just about every year to start with.
Well, it's not been every year. That's why, that's why I got here. It's actually been 5% in COLA raises since 2014. Now, yeah, it has been some one-time bonuses, but that doesn't move the salary at all. It's just a one-time payment. So as government, in government, we have a salary range, and it's built for employees with tenure. As they get more tenure, they go, they progress more in their range. Well, if we don't give COLA increases, we tend to fall behind. So that's kind of where we are now.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
Excuse me. And we looked at individual employees versus across the board doing a tier. I mean, I appreciate what you do. And it's easy just to give everyone a raise, but I don't think that's what we need to do. I think we need to address what departments are in need instead of doing an across-the-board tier.
So that's kind of, well, that's kind of why this is structured this way. Because if you look, I got another slide that says current problems. Is, this will really focus our attention to the lower-tier positions that we can't fill and we can't keep. It's, our applicant pool is way down. And then what happens over time is when you try to promote from within, but you don't have anybody with any tenure that has the training or the knowledge or whatever to move up. So it's, in a lot of the critical areas, and I got them on here, our positions that we're really struggling with are in those lower-tier. Your mechanics, maintenance workers, heavy equipment, correctional officers, dispatch. You know, those critical areas are the ones who, you know, are on the lower end of the tier that need the most help.
Right. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. If those areas are the ones that we have in the most problems trying to fill.
Yeah. Well, it's pretty much across the board. I mean, you got even clerical staff. I mean, as long as I've been doing HR, we've never had problems finding, you know, qualified clerical staff. But now, I mean, I think it, we had an opening in an office, and it took months to fill. I mean, it's just, it's just across the board. And that's why we felt this was the best way to go, because we could address all our needs more efficiently.
You're doing this to keep the employees we got.
That, and get qualified applicants. Get a little better applicant pool. That's our goal with the tier. And this is a one-time, I want to stress that, too. This, this wouldn't be an every-year thing. This is a one-time kind of adjustment to get those lower-level positions up to where they need to be, where we can be more competitive. I mean, you got, a lot of industry comes in the door making 14, 15, 16 bucks an hour. And, you know, we're, our maintenance positions are nowhere near that. So we just, we can't even fill, we can't fill temp spots. I mean, it's, it's a tough way right now.
When I, when I looked at the budget process for this year, Mr. Carter, and looked at the tier approach, I was very pleased. I was. I was very pleased. We've been talking about this for quite a bit. And what it would do, it would allow those people on the bottom of the totem pole to have an income that's meaningful.
If you do, if you do the math, it's close to the same number as if you did about 2.5% across the board, which is, you know, I mean, I think that's reasonable myself. But you achieve, I think we would achieve a lot more this way. If you did, say you wanted to give everybody 2.5% cost of living adjustment, it would cost you about the same as what this tier.
Wouldn't be as much this year.
Sir?
It wouldn't be as much this year because nobody working.
If, if we were to point to where we had to lay off people or in that, yeah, you're right. We aren't, we aren't to that point.
I, I'll just say, I was pleased as well. I liked the way it was broken down into the brackets. Kind of gives, gives that level plan, bring you up to that level playing field where everyone else is at.
All right. Back to our sheet number three on that sheet is the proposal of a longevity bonus to be given at the beginning of December. That's something that was back in place this year, I think. And the total cost of that's about $50,000. There's a little bit of restructuring there. I think try to give everybody something and to adjust the levels of that longevity. Again, if y'all have questions about that, Mr. Carter could answer those. Do y'all have a question about the longevity now?
Ms. Bill?
Yes, we proposing a raise, then longevity pay.
Well, the longevity pay has been a part of county policy for years and years. I think what kind of brought it up this year, we had several employees who, a lot of people were left out because they didn't fall, they were below the two-year mark, and they didn't get anything. And it, and it's naturally given around the beginning of December. So people think of it as a Christmas bonus, even though it's not really, not one. But they just kind of saw it that way. So we had a lot of employee feedback to try to change it a little. So that's why this is proposed.
Again, this is long, this is, this is a raise plus longevity pay.
Well, the longevity, it's just, well, the longevity pay's been there. This is just changing the structure of the longevity, how it's given.
Okay. So are you saying the longevity pay is automatic?
If, if you fall in that, in the criteria.
Oh, no, no. It's not automatic. Everybody, no.
Again, this is, this was something council would need to decide on, whether to leave in the budget or take out of the budget.
Mr. Carter, I mean, I could be, I could be wrong, but I don't see one year as being longevity. I mean, I would, I would ask that council consider maybe, you know, rather a period of 10 years or five years or some of that magnitude to be able to get a longevity bonus. You know, if you hear a year, six months of that year, you're on probation. So I would like to see that restructured.
I can tell you how it's currently structured right now. It's two to four years, $100,000. Five to nine years, $150,000. 10 to 14, $200,000. 15 to 19, $250,000. And 20 plus $300,000. That's how it is right now.
So zero to two, get nothing?
Nothing. Nice. Got to be here two years to get, get something.
Root word long, root word longevity. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All right. The next thing is the retirement rate increase. And this is something that is, you know, dictated by PIBA. So the South Carolina retiree members are moving from, and this is our, our portion. Of course, we don't pay for what they pay for, so that's not a part of our budget. But the, the benefit piece of that that we pay is going from 15.56% to 16.56%, which is about a cost of $109,000. And the police officer retirement from 18.24% to 19.24%. And they have a schedule out there that goes through, I think, fiscal year 2022. And it's going up a percent, you know, through there, we know. And I feel like it will continue to rise. They've just laid it out there through 2022. And also, that's, that's built in the budget at this time was the addition of Veterans Day as a paid holiday. We do not currently recognize that. The cost of that would be about $16,000.
I agree with administrator. We don't need it as a paid holiday.
There are some personnel position requests listed here. I think what we'll do with those is we get to each department, we'll go through those. That way, if the department head comes in, we can, can do all that at one time while they're in here. Are there any other questions on this part thus far before we jump in?
I just asked. I guess I got one comment. On 036, you talking about all, all these jobs, right?
Just talking about the first part she's read so far.
Right. But you talking about page one and two, right?
It's just the first page down to the chart down at the bottom. Number five is the last thing she read.
Yeah. It's vast.
Up to that. You haven't gone any further than that.
Yeah, Ms. Bass.
Yes.
Are you talking about these pages, one and two, where you, where you got the personnel position changes?
Yes, sir. As we.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah. As we go through each department's budget, if they have a specific personnel request, we'll discuss as we discuss their budget as a whole. Because some of those are, we didn't invite all the departments like we normally have, just in light of trying to keep our distance. But the ones we did invite were ones that would have a personnel request or a large capital request. So we can get them in here and do the personnel, the capital, and their regular budget all, all at the same time, if that's.
Are we planning on having the Recreation Commissioner, I mean Recreation Director here?
Is he here tonight?
We did not because he didn't really have.
He made one request, and that was the old shade, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I'm okay with him not being here. I just had, just so, let me just make this comment then on 036-035. That, and that, and that's for the fitness center, Android Park. I guess in 7.7 years, if that don't increase, that's going to cost us about $400,000, that in, that work.
The staff members?
Yes. $400,000.
And in all the departments, just kind of preface as we get started. Of course, built in everything. The tier is built in there for the whole year. The increase in retirement's built in there. So those are going to be some of the changes, even if nothing else, those two items have changed. We look, try to mainly go through and really get some explanations on things that have like a greater than 5% increase. We'll go through each one. For County Council, that was a small increase, about 1%, which would probably be primarily contributed to the retirement going up. I don't think anything else was increased in that department.
And as we go through these, could you just kind of point out what page we're on also, make sure everybody?
Yes.
Page one of three.
Yeah, we're on the long sheet.
The long sheet.
The landscape sheet. Is everybody there?
Yes.
The next department is the county attorney, and it increased about $100,000. And as Mr. Taylor was saying, this is overall legal fees because of.
Because of the lawsuit.
Because of the lawsuit? A particular one?
Again.
I, I know we got the one.
The primary, the one concerning the Commerce Center.
Yeah.
There's an issue there that we do think that is going to drag out before it can get resolved. And we're going to spend a fair amount of legal on that upfront.
Yes, sir. And I guess y'all probably know, because I've already talked to you about it, because that's, that's a $100,000 increase in one year.
Just a guess. Definitely this time, he's got having to go to court.
I'm just, I'm saying that. That's $100,000.
The next department is the Administration Department. That increase is primarily related to salaries and benefits.
Who, who is all under that for 6%? What's all of that?
That's Administration, the administrative assistant, the assistant administrator, the receptionist. I think that's all the employees. Yeah.
And as part of that, the increase in the retirement, too?
It is. Yeah. The retirement's built into every department. And the tiered increase is built into every department. If, if we decide to do something, you know, different with that, of course, we'll adjust that. But that's what's built in there as it stands right now. The next department, the Finance Department. It's a 5% increase, about $28,000. The main increase there was in auditing fees, and we included an IT audit this year. We had one a couple of years ago, and they just come and audit security and permissions and authorizations and different things like that. And so we've included that again this year. It's not required every single year. And if y'all have any questions, just stop me. The next department, Human Resources, it's a increase of about $59,000. The safety tech position is full-time. In previous years, it had been temporary. I think back maybe five years ago, it was full-time, and then kind of tried to rearrange that. And so that, that's back full-time.
We don't have anybody doing safety now.
Yes. Yes. That, that is a full-time position now. The Purchasing Department, it was just a slight increase, about $1,900. And that would probably be primarily related to retirement increases in the salary. Data Processing, it went up about $76,000. Some of those primary increases are the purchasing Microsoft Office and the server operating system licenses to try to get that migrated over, I believe, to Office 10. Next.
Is that going to go up every year?
It shouldn't go up that much every year related to that, not related to just updating licenses. But it, I mean, it probably will happen again in five years when Microsoft makes another big change or stops supporting something.
We do have Art Mahead here to answer specific questions.
Okay. Did I explain that right, Marvin? Okay.
Yes, that's a variable. It, it would depend on, you know, what changes Microsoft. It, it, it would depend on, you know, what changes Microsoft may push and force out. Like some of our server operating systems will soon be, you know, uh, inadequate to continue functioning. We have to upgrade them or else the county's business will just stop. And that's beyond our control.
I thought we got everything new two years ago.
We did.
And then they've gone out of.
That was hardware we got new, new two years ago. Yes.
Okay.
That's expensive.
And we used the most, uh, recent operating systems at that time as long as we could. We, we've had servers in operation as long as eight years at times, which is antique for information technology. I want to use them as far as I can and get the best money out of them that I can. But I have to balance that with security and making sure that they're not, uh, hacked and interrupted brought down to, you know, the county's data. It's a challenge to balance all of that at, at one time between the money and security.
Mr. Bell?
Um, last year, um, I guess, Ms. Johnson, one of the things we talked about is, and I don't know whether this is the right time to kind of bring this up, but, um, how you order supplies and all that kind of stuff, um, being on a very, on the computer system, maybe like a SAP, y'all probably already doing that, um, so that, um, it's one central location for ordering that. Did we do that last time?
I think they decided to do that last year. Everything's put in one place, but need material or something, they come to.
Um, I know we talked about that, did, did y'all implement that last year?
You mean ordering from one specific company?
No, um.
Supplies.
Yeah, um, just have one person do all the supplies and everybody pick them up for that. You know, so you can make it more efficient.
We do it with some things.
We do it with some things and not for others, cause we don't, also, we don't wanna have to stockpile anything either. So, you know, we have certain vendors that we do order for, from that's under the threshold in the procurement manual.
I mean, I mean, what, what I'm asking is, we don't have no automatic system, like just-in-time delivery for all the supplies and that kind of stuff. So, you know, so they, they come in, we, we, when you run short, so everybody don't have to order them, not in everybody's budget. I thought we talked about that.
No, I think we order, I mean, every department order what they need. It may still come from the same vendor, but we just order, it, it's, it's up to every department head to, to basically.
Get all the orders up together and ordered at one time?
Yeah, and we have some.
Walk ordering to.
Right, and some stuff we do book order.
Right.
But, but, but you know why? But you saying sometimes we do that, you don't have a system?
I mean, we have a system, but we still leave it up to the department head, cause our current system now, they have to put in a, a requisition for the items that they need, not just automatically book purchasing all the supplies that we need.
Yes, ma'am, I don't wanna label that to disagree.
Right.
Yeah, they don't take the paper off and do the church building and stuff anymore.
All right, continue.
All right, um, the next, next department's our general operating department. And some of the things that are in this, it has, has quite a large increase. But this is where our longevity is budgeted, the increase in retiree insurance. We, um, we've increased workers' compensation a little bit, and this is also where our grant match is. So this is a large increase, but it, it has a lot of those big ticket items. Yes?
The grant match increase. Is that the grant match? That is three hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, where we increased it by about three hundred thousand.
Okay, I, now, I thought we cut the municipal grant match to give to the promise program. Do we not, do we not do that?
That, this includes the promise program. It includes the one fifty or the up to one fifty for council on agent, and then includes some additional that we put in there if, um, we need economic development opportunities. So that, that's all in that big increase. I'm all.
Board against what?
Board against what, mister?
Um, while we're on this department, I'm gonna let Brad explain the need for the change in the retiree insurance structure.
Okay, um. So basically, um, in two thousand ten, um, we changed how we fund, uh, county retirees. Previously, it had been the same as the state used, um, same guidelines that they use to fund retirees. In two thousand ten, when that was changed, we stopped paying, um, a pretty substantial amount of retiree insurance benefits for the retirees. And it's really had a big effect on us. Right now, I think the, the retention rate of our employees has really gone down. Like I was mentioning earlier, this is one big part of it. Actually, almost fifty percent of our employees have been with us less than five years. And we're at about seventy percent have been with us less than ten. We're unable to attract any qualified people, especially when it comes to management positions right now. Anybody with ten, fifteen years of state service is not gonna come to us and essentially not be entitled to the state retirement insurance for the same price that they could, would have it as a state employee had they retired from the state. It's, and it's also hurting our, um, tenured employees now. We've had, I, I don't wanna say a specific number, but we have had a few already who are getting toward that fifteen to twenty-year mark, who've said, you know, I can't afford it in retirement and have left. Key employees.
Okay, um, excuse me, Mr. Calder, um, so you've done exit interviews, and that's what the exit interview says?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. And also, I mean, when we go to fill a job, you know, a lot of the cities and counties, they all state, they all, we all share the same insurance coverage. So when you have people who are qualified with other municipalities and they're funding and we're not, you know, it hurts you big time because you're looking for, obviously, somebody who's got the years of experience, the education, the training, and everything that comes along with it. So that's, that's the main gist of it. If you had to ask me, what's the most important thing from my perspective is, in this budget for its HR concerns is this. This is huge. Not to mention our retirees who, when they get eligible for Medicare, you know, they're basically cut off from us funding them besides a hundred and fifty dollar check that we send them. And they use that, they have to use that towards a supplement. You know, they, uh, any outside supplement. So, and also, when regular employees, let's say somebody is pre-sixty-five and they can retire, so they have coverage as an active employee that, for them and their family and all, they have dependents on their coverage. When they retire, their insurance, if they've got full family insurance, it, it goes up substantially. At the county.
Talking about going up and giving them supplemental insurance, I pay my own supplemental.
Well, when somebody turns sixty-five, when a county retiree turns sixty-five, the county, the only thing we do is if they will provide us evidence that they have supplemental coverage, then we give them a hundred and fifty dollars towards that coverage. And another thing it does is retire, when they do that, when they go outside of us for another provider, they don't have any help. They don't have any help with claims, they don't have any help with, you know, we're pretty much out of the picture. And we get that a lot too. We'll have employee or retirees that'll come in and say, I'm not, they're not paying this claim, you know. What I have, what's, what's the problem, you know, we can't help them.
Well, I thought you paid a hundred and fifty dollars for stimulus or something, that'll insure it to the retirees.
Yeah, we do. But I'm just saying, that covers that they, whatever they have with whoever is with, you know, is not with us. Only thing we do is just give them a check.
Right.
We don't support that insurance. We can't call people like we can with a normal retiree and walk them through the process of why isn't it working? Whatever. Another thing, you know, it's, it's several, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going on, but it's a lot to this. It also, you know, when they have a state supplement, supplemental coverage through the state, it also provides prescription drug coverage. Well, for a retiree, when they can't afford our state prescription drug coverage, and they gotta go out and find Medicare Part D coverage. Um, so that's a whole nother, opens up a whole nother can of worms.
Um. W- w- one of the things, I guess, I've been led to believe and really participated in is, is the, um, is the retirement. And, and it's really a good retirement, even at the county level. Now, our salary infringes of fifty-seven percent. Now. Um, what I, what I've done is, I've gone online and looked at other counties of, of, um, comparable sizes and even counties that's bigger. That, that, that's a, that's a lot. Fifty-seven percent salary infringes. That's what's on your chart here that you give us.
I'll add, if you, if you, if you have the slides in front of you, there's one on there that says impact on retirees. And it really walks through, you know, what that looks like to a retiree and how it affects their income and what the price difference is, um, for them. And that's one reason we don't have many people retiring is that they can't afford the insurance. You know, that holds up, and you, nobody can move up, nobody, it, it affects your promotions or whatever.
And, and that's everywhere, right? As, as in private sector?
Cost of board.
Yeah, private sector and, um, and, and.
Well, generally, people work for the state for the retirement and the insurance.
Mr. Calder, is that also required for people who were, who were ever elected officials after they are no longer with the county? Is that a state requirement?
Is it a state requirement for us to provide coverage?
If they were elected officials, but they're no longer?
If they meet the guidelines, if they have to meet the guidelines, this.
I think it's twelve, yeah?
Yeah, it's different for elected officials than, than normal employees. But they would fall right under the, our guidelines as to how we fund them. There's not a law that says if they do X amount of years, you gotta fund them. We determine how we fund them. It's like everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Bass?
Okay. And I'm gonna actually, I apologize, I'm gonna jump back to data processing right quick. I forgot to, um, mention their capital part. So we have another, um, big landscape sheet, this one does not have shaded lines. And they are about halfway down on the first page. There were several items requested. Two of the big ones was consolidate the camera system. And I think we decided to hold off on that because.
Where are we at now?
Um, on the capital budget, it's a.
Second long.
Second long.
Long landscape sheet. And data processing's about halfway down. Okay. I think it was decided just to hold off on the camera system, cause we have some construction going on in some buildings and just until all that's kind of complete and do that as one project. And then the data center in Ridgeway, um, I think the room for it to go in has got to actually be constructed first and, um, wanted to get that done and then budget for the, for the equipment to go in there. So the two things that remained in there are the Cisco umbrella and the Zerto virtual machine backup. I think Marvin's over there to explain those if you have any questions.
Mr. Taylor didn't, um, recommend it. He didn't recommend that anyway. The data center.
Right, the, the two items are the Cisco umbrella and a, um, virtual machine backup.
But is, is it the same thing as web, web banks? You, you could do individual, um, conferencing?
No, it's not, it's, uh, referring to the umbrella?
Yeah.
The umbrella would allow us to control web traffic to our remote locations. We have many outlying buildings like Ridgeway Fire Department, for example, that are not under the core network here where we can centrally manage it. And we have some requests like the fire marshal concerned about people using the web traffic for less than.
I agree.
Good purposes. And then on top of that, it, it, it's also much more subject to a hack and attack because it doesn't have a true firewall. So what this would allow us to do is centrally manage what webpages can or cannot be viewed from, from any location. Essentially gives us a much better control like we do here in the main core network.
Yes, sir.
Then one thing, and I had two, was Palo Alto traps, I don't think you mentioned that. That's something I wanted to replace our current, uh, antivirus system with. It's a, a much more robust antivirus system look for artificial intelligence, uh, attacks, not just signature-based attacks. So it would, it would keep us more proactively from invaders and attacks and that type of thing. That's around twenty-three grand, something like that, but it, it would replace our.
What's, what, what was the name of that trap system?
Palo Alto makes it, it's called traps.
This is something above and beyond what you had initially asked for?
No, I initially asked.
Is that in here or no?
It should be.
I don't think it's in here.
I'll have that in.
If, if it's not, I'm not sure.
I don't see it in there, but I was wondering if it, is it actually an equipment purchase or is it something that they have moved it to your operating?
It may have.
Yeah.
They have.
I think, I, I, I think we need to do that, I think as a security concern not to have it.
Correct, it's, it's, it's a, it's a much more robust system than what we're, we're, we currently partner with semantic. Semantic is a world-known antivirus program. There's nothing wrong with semantic, but, uh, the feedback I'm getting from IT professionals that I peer with is that Palo Alto traps is a much more robust system to protect you proactively.
Yeah, I think security, uh, I think security-wise, we, we, we really don't have a choice, I think it needs to be done.
Yes, sir.
How much is it?
Around twenty, about around twenty-three grand to protect three hundred.
And we're thinking that's in the operation budget, not the capital budget.
It would be an annual.
Yes, it would be, I'm, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to confuse people.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the, and you already mentioned Microsoft Office and operating systems that we need to change. And then the other one was a network audit. Even though.
And we put that up in finance with our audit.
Okay.
We're getting back to Apple at the moment.
I think I'm finished.
Yep.
Um, let me ask, let me ask this question now. I normally use, um, Office six to five, I have to buy this description every year, okay, so to stay up to date. But one of the things is, is, um, and, and if this is sort of a bad question, just let me know. But, um, i- i- is there a way, since we get the licenses, to, um, um, expand those licenses to, um, council, or we just don't wanna do that?
We'd probably put that under council's budget, not necessarily under IT's. Possibly, we'd have to look and see.
Okay, and you know what, I just thought of something too. Thank you. As, um, for what you just said, I, I know a way to do that, yeah.
Continue on Ms. Bass.
All right, sorry about that.
No problem.
Where we hopping to now?
I think, I'm sorry, we won't play hopscotch too much. I just, I wanted to catch Marvin's capital while we were right there.
We're going back?
Okay, back to the other.
Yep, we're back on track. So I think we were through the general operating, and that'll take us to the tax assessor. That went up about forty-one thousand dollars, and that, that was a personnel request item. And based on conversations with some of the council members, one of the recommended changes is for that particular position not to fund that, so.
I couldn't hear you.
I didn't hear you.
That one probably will be zeroed out.
Not to fund that one, to zero that out.
Can you tell me how many employees?
They have three and a half. The half one is one that's wanting to, uh, make full-time and he's leaving. And the half one is one that wants to make full time and he's leaving here pretty soon anyway, Barnes.
I think it, it used to be five full-time in there.
Yeah.
And they have been cut back, so...
Plenty of, and the only time they needed extra help is when they got that five-year cycle, um...
Reassessment.
Reassessment.
I think reassessment's coming.
Can we, um...
They don't need help then.
Can we get, um, before we decide on that, can we get, who is it? As a, Mr. Hensley?
Yeah.
Yes.
Before we, before we decide on that, can we get him here at another, another time to, um, a reason on why he wants another employee?
He, he just wanted to make it full-time.
He wants one, he wants to add...
Right, right.
The part-time one and have one full-time, so we'll have to pay those five things for that too, retirement, all that taxes and stuff and, um...
I, I would like for him to explain, um, it's something that may be needed, I don't know, but, um, I, I would like to give him a chance to come here and explain it.
Okay, we'll invite him to the next one, okay?
Just remember, if, if council got input to, please let, let us know.
All right, the, um, next department is the delinquent tax collector. Um, that went up...
What, what number you on?
Um, the next department is, yep, Department Ten, one hundred dash zero one zero.
Okay.
And it went up about eleven thousand dollars. And that is primarily, um, related to posting delinquent properties, and she is reimbursed for that. It's, it just shows in revenue, it's not netted out.
Every, we'll charge that right back, we'll get that money back.
Okay.
All right, um, our next department is our building maintenance department. They actually had a little bit of a decrease, but they do have some capital. The things that they have requested, well, the one thing that's recommended, the magistrate building roof, um, and it's recommended about fifteen thousand dollars. They also requested a janitorial vehicle, but we're gonna use, um, not skip ahead too much, but, um, our community development department has requested two four-wheel-drive vehicles, and we're gonna take their two-wheel-drive vehicles and use one of them as our janitorial vehicle, so that, we won't need to spend that twenty-five thousand. So their only capital request is fifteen thousand for the roof.
We put this roof off before that.
Yeah, we did.
We put, yeah.
And that would be if community development got approved for their two vehicles.
That's right, if, if community development doesn't get approved for their vehicles, then we need to put that one back for building maintenance.
The roof have already been, um, bid, bid, bid it out, or you just know that?
We have estimates on it.
Okay.
At least we have Keith go out for budget numbers, we can get estimates.
All right.
All right, um...
Just, uh, just, just talking about community development, you talking about the code enforcement?
No.
Yeah, that's, that's my next department.
Code enforcement, we don't need any, anybody extra in code enforcement.
Okay, all right, so are we, we're through with building maintenance?
I don't wanna get too far here, so let's just continue on where we're going.
Yeah, are we, well, community development's next, I just wanna be sure there are no more questions on building maintenance, um, and then...
I, I guess I was thinking, we had, um, more roof repaired and fifteen thousand dollars for roof.
We were also looking at the DSS roof at one point. That estimate was coming in at three fifty to four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we're gonna see if we can repair it, let it buy one more year, and then budget that next year.
Okay, all right, okay, I know I heard it somewhere.
All right, so moving to community development, um, their overall budget went up, and I think Chris is here.
Yeah.
There he is, okay. Um, it went up about eighty thousand dollars. Part of that is to request to take a temporary position full-time and, um, that young lady would take on the, um, business registration collecting and maintaining that. Also, to hire a code enforcement officer effective one-one. We had originally had it in there for the full year and just through discussing timing of things right now, cut that in half.
I thought we were gonna try to eliminate some of these positions. Now you want to add somebody else for retirement on here and gets, what, uh, part-time code enforcement officer? And he'll be full-time next, in about two or three months.
I think we've been putting off that code enforcement position for a long...
Or they just hired somebody in there.
I agree, well that...
They got a guy working in the back office back in there now, put him to work.
Code enforcement?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is again, one of those things, we had some council members that didn't want it, some that want us to consider it, and we've got Chris here to present it, and it'll be on the motions list, where you all can decide, uh, whether we do fund this position or not.
Um, but how many people you got, Chris? You ain't got but a couple people, do you?
Uh, we have one code enforcement officer, uh, Ms. Monica Johnson.
That's correct.
And she wears all the Fairfield County correct?
Right.
She does, right now she's actually, um, doing the front desk, so...
Yeah.
Well, what does God do that y'all hired? What does he do, just sit at the desk?
I, I don't know what individual you're talking about. There's the, the deputy, um, building official, uh, Mr. Netherton, he was hired here most recently, or Jeff?
Talking about Jeff.
Okay, yeah, Jeff is, uh, he's the planner and the zoning administrator.
But as far as an officer? All he does is plan and...
He reviews for compliance with the zoning ordinance and he does the flood elevation certificates. Um, we do enforcement on the zoning side as well, so he's involved with that, but he is not a, a code enforcement officer, no sir.
Okay, um, will, will, um, Jeff be doing any work on those houses that we're gonna start tearing down to make sure we do all that correctly and all that stuff?
Uh, that's a grant, you're talking with the CDVG grant?
Yeah.
That's a grant that the administration is the cog. They're, they're taking, um, I think they're eight percent of that, um, and so they're gonna assist us with that, administering that.
Mr. Taylor, you did state that this is on the motions list?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, it will be on the motions list.
Okay, before we, uh, before we voted on, on, on the motions list, you just give us a, um, a list of employees that he has and their jobs and what they do?
We can do that, yes, sir.
Also, while Mr. Clausen's here, he had a couple of capital requests. Those being, um, he had requested three four-by-four vehicles, and it came forth as a recommendation to purchase two of those, and as I said, we would take those two-wheel-drive vehicles, giving one to building maintenance for the janitorial vehicle and giving the other one, um, to the supervisor for our solid waste.
Why does he need a four, four-wheel drive?
With...
I've never seen him go off the road. They just go there and take a picture of the places and then turn around and go back to the office.
With the exception of one vehicle when I got here, um, all the rest of them were just two-wheel, uh, so the inspectors are continuously going out to work sites. Um, we had one that was involved with an accident last year because he could not, um, get out of the way essentially when, uh, he was sliding back and hit a tree. Um, so, I mean, all these, uh, the roads that we have or lack thereof necessitates, uh, in my mind, um, four-wheel-drive capacity for code enforcement and then for, um, the building inspections.
Who would, I'm sorry?
Um, I'm okay with, with four-wheel drives, but I'm not okay with, um, buying all these, like F-150s, Silverado, fifteen-hundred, we oughta get the small trucks, that's what you're doing?
Th- these are the cheapest four-wheel-drive trucks.
Okay, I, I, I'm okay with that.
Line are we on, man?
We're on the, looking on the capital budget, that's the big sheet without the lines, and it's about...
Back over to the capital budget.
Yep, about the third department down with his, um, capital request.
Mr. Clausen, do you kinda have an idea of who would be driving these vehicles?
Yes, sir, um, these, these two, if we didn't get the third...
Is it two, is it three?
Uh, there was the third because we thought we could get that code enforcement officer, and I guess that had been pulled, so we're only gonna go with two. We have two vehicles right now that they were bought, um, I believe it was three, four years ago, that were just two-wheel-drive, and so they're, they're relatively new, um, sixty thousand miles on one and seventy on another, I think. Um, so those two, we're gonna replace with the, the Dodge Ram, uh, is the cheapest four-wheel-drive under state contract.
Well, why can't you just order one four-wheel drive?
We have been slowly, um, every year, we've, we've been asking to replace all of them, and then we got one last year, um, and then hopefully...
He's, he's questioning.
Got one four-wheel drive already?
Yeah, he's, we, we do, we have...
Why do you need more new vehicle just to give the other vehicles to somebody else that felt still running good, with low mileage? It doesn't look like to me you need any.
Right, if you, if you, if you got one, 'cause you look like you ought to be able to switch up.
It's just when people get called to a work site, then we'd have to have an additional vehicle, uh, you know, to, to switch those out.
I can leave them, Peter, through.
We wanna include that on the motions list then, for, and so...
We're putting this on the motions list, so we...
Okay, I, um, I got one other question, Mrs. Chair. One of the things, um, um, as a firefighter, one of the things we have to do if there's a wreck, I don't care how it happened, it could just, you can just bump into the building and just back into something. We have to go through the, um, there's extensive training, um, before we're able to drive the truck again. And the question I have, since you say you had a wreck, um, do they, do the county employees have to go through that training also when they have an accident?
That'll be a Mr. Calder question.
When they have an accident? Uh, I mean, it's not automatic, it depends on the circumstances.
Yeah, our, um, the fire service is, it makes no difference who had fault, you can be right, you can, you can, deer can ride across the road.
Yeah, we don't have anything that says it's automatic, do it, no. We just have them on case by case.
Mr. Taylor, once again, and, and, and instead of me repeating myself, if we could just make this, um, whereas any department that's asking for vehicles, that's gonna be put on the motions list, if we could also have an inventory of the vehicles they currently have.
I'm questioning, are we gonna put all vehicles on the motion list instead of just, we gotta do all vehicles that way?
We don't have to do all of them.
No, I mean, if you...
I'm saying the ones that we do, the ones that we do put on the motion list.
Just remember, we'll be here all night if we keep talking about the same vehicles, though.
All right. Are we ready to move on?
Go ahead, Ms. Bazey.
Okay.
Where we at now?
Um, we're back on our department sheet, and we are on department number thirteen, vehicle maintenance. It, it went up, it looks like it went up extremely by a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, but as you all are aware, our transit department is budgeted in Fund Two Zero Six. So previously, two of our vehicle maintenance positions and all their associated benefits have been budgeted in that fund, and they're now just budgeted in our general fund all as one department. So if, if you care to flip back, or you can wait till we get there, you'll notice in Fund Two Oh Six, you see this same decrease. So it really is, is not...
Moving from one line after the other.
It's not really that much of an increase.
Gotcha.
Our next department is economic development, went up about twenty-one thousand dollars. That's primarily related to engineering costs associated with some of their projects. Um, the detention center, it actually had a slight decrease, um, but they also have some capital. They had one capital item, it was a transport van, about twenty-five thousand dollars, and they had, um, requested this last year as well, and we put it off. So that is on the capital budget as a recommendation.
Um, is this the transport van that the fire service also use? No, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I was thinking about the trailer.
Right, now this is dedicated to, to, for, and they transport.
Okay.
Replace one of the trans, uh, one of the vans that they have?
It is.
They've asked for it for...
No, we put it off, put it off for two years straight, I think.
Ms. Bazey, I didn't, I didn't hear you mention it, um, and maybe you did, and I didn't hear it, but I thought they were also asking for a part-time hook to be moved to full-time.
You are correct, um... They asked for their kitchen supervisor, who, um, currently works just under thirty hours a week to go full-time.
And based on, again, discussions with certain members of council, they requested that that be taken out, so that'll be on the motions list as well.
Well, y'all must have left me out, okay.
That was during those phone, weekly phone calls.
All right. Department, um, we have road maintenance and solid waste, and I think we have Mr. Hartzog here. Art's gonna grab him. They had, um, in road maintenance, they had a, a pretty minimal increase, about two percent of the overall budget.
They had more capital.
Yeah, capitals.
And they, yeah, they do have a capital request, and we'll wait for him.
Mr. Taylor, I have a question while, while we're waiting.
Sure.
Um, we've talked about, is this, is the solid waste in there where the mulch would be?
Yes.
Um, are we gonna look at doing a business model where we can provide mulch?
We've started looking at that, again, the expense is, is the concern, I mean, we're saving a good bit of money, taking it to Richland County right now, bringing the mulch machine in, that's where the cost is. Uh, I've asked Art to start looking at that. I, I'm afraid what we're gonna find, though, is the cost that we would have to charge to justify, it's gonna be more than people would wanna pay for it. I don't...
And, and it, and it could be, and you're prob, and you're probably right, I just wanna know what that cost is so we can communicate that cost to the public.
We, we can do that.
Okay.
Again, I'm afraid, looking at a business model, it's not gonna be supportive.
Okay.
If we could, we'd do another, get as much done in the next twenty minutes, then we'll take a break, 'cause that'll put everyone...
All right, um, we have Mr. Hartzog here, and we'll let him go over his capital requests. There's a supervisor's pickup, a jet vac pipe washer, and a motor grater, um, and they, they all are recommended. Hartzog, you, you just wanna go over your capital request?
Well, I think at one point, the county had maybe four motor graders, and our fleet is starting to show its age. One's two thousand ten, one's two thousand fifteen. We have one that is completely down. Most counties our size, like I say, have a four. We're just kinda getting by with two right now. We really need, you know, an extra one if something wants to go down, and, um, we'd be spread kinda thin. The prices that I quoted came from the, um, state procurement list, uh, with a little bit of a contingency markup factored in. The supervisor's truck, we have a supervisor, and he just, he borrows what he can, when he can, and he can't keep all of his tools in one place, and that's kinda inefficient, and, um, and that was the other request. And finally, the jet vac is a standard piece of equipment for, uh, the fellow that works to wash out pipes, especially after storms and all the rains, everything that we've had, otherwise they have to completely dig up the pipe and replace it. And, um, you know, our quote was based on something similar that the town has, a lot of time we, we have to borrow some of the town's equipment, and it's, um...
My question is about the motor grader, I'm sorry, if you can hear me, Mr. Art. Uh, is this a standard typical-type motor grader? I was just looking at the, the amount it costs.
There are several different brands, and I just quoted, I think there's a John Deere on there, some other, other ones, probably similar to what we have that are less than what I quoted, but I was just trying to be, uh, conservative and, and...
Supervisor pickup have a bathroom in it? Kinda high.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about the supervisor pickup, did you have like one in mind that you got the price from? Is it like a regular pickup, four-wheel drive?
It's similar to the other trucks that we have, probably the added cost there is like a utility, um, bed for storage, tools, can, you know, things like that, safety equipment is pretty standard.
You talking about...
It's not the top of the line by any means.
I'm not in his bed for tobacco.
It's, it, yes, uh, it's a, it, it's something that kinda fits on to the...
Two chests of them.
Y- yes, with cabinets, and that you can lock and store your equipment and protect it and...
Where's the old one at, what's wrong with it? Brad wore it out.
What was that?
He said, "What's wrong with the old one?"
Where's the old one?
Whether we don't have one, the supervisor doesn't have one, he just borrows what he can.
The supervisor's truck, supervisor's truck, that's, he's going, you say toolbox and all that, is that for him to work on it, or is he gonna be calling maintenance to work on vehicles, you know?
I'll, I'll clarify a little bit. This is for the crew that does the asphalt repair on our roads, and they don't have, they're just using a spare truck right now. They don't have anything, they're just throwing tools in the back.
Okay.
Set up for them. So they, and it's, a lot of times, it's three of them in the truck on that crew, so this would give them the room and the ability to carry their tools with them to fix the road.
So it's a definite need?
It's a need, yeah, okay, thank you, thank you.
Um, Mr., Mr. Art, um, do, do we have in that, um, maybe I'm, the, um, where you clean out the, um, carry cogs, that's in here?
Yes, that's the jet.
That's the jet vac, the pipe washer, and there's a wide range of costs on that, and, um, some of them are a lot cheaper, but probably not the type of grade, commercial grade that we need, industrial grade to do the type of work that we need. And, and what I quoted was the same kind that the town has, and they got theirs from the same place. And, um, and they, uh, they have an older one that they let us use from time to time, but it's not reliable. And we can't really plan, you know, effectively around their schedule. They, they're generous in working with us when we need it, but we can't come up with like, be effective and come up with a plan and a, and a route and, and a routine maintenance to, to try to keep, you know, pipes open and clean, and there's a lot of challenges out with the type of roads, we have gravel roads, and they're not paved, and, and they get silted and fill in a lot.
Mr. Baz.
One, one of the things that, that, that all council members have is, is road and road problems, um, ditch problems and all that kinda stuff. So all of the stuff that you're asking for is really needed, and, um, thank you for putting it in the budget, I'll be frank with you.
Council have any, anything further, if not, I guess we just, nothing else from council? Thank you, Art.
Thank you.
We didn't intimidate you too bad for your first time, did we?
Sir, thank you very much.
Tight force.
One more?
Yep. Well, they, they had a very small increase, two percent for their operations budget, but the solid waste budget, a lot of, a lot of that is, they're, they are finally fully staffed there, and the solid waste disposal cost is in that increase, in vehicle service costs, having to maintain some of the larger vehicles. They have two capital requests there. One is a pickup for the deputy director, and one is a roll-off truck replacement. So that solid waste, um, deputy director there, as you see, that is one of the vehicles that's not recommended for purchase. That is using one of the two-wheel-drive vehicles that we anticipate taking from community development. So that's where the other one of those trucks is going. So again.
What's the mileage on the two, the two-wheel vehicles, the other two we're getting again? I'm sorry, Chris, where's Chris at, what's the mileage on those two vehicles?
He's at sixty-one.
And as I understand it, this one would be for the gentleman that, um, goes around to check the recycling centers and such.
So we'll be putting, he'll be putting even more miles on a, on the vehicle? Is that what I'm getting at?
I, I think the reasoning behind that was that he does not have a need to have four-wheel drive. So we're gonna use our existing fleet there and fill the four-wheel drive need.
One four-wheel drive, already got a four-wheel drive.
Um, but the, there's a roll-off replacement that's being recommended. Mr. Hartzog would like to, are there any questions about that?
We'll get back to that.
I think we still got one on back order, don't we?
It should.
Yeah. Okay.
So, okay. The next department, um, is animal control. They have an increase, it's about fourteen percent. During the year, they had a temporary employee, um, I believe was, uh, moved to full-time. And then they've increased their medical services for animal, and also their medical supplies for their animals. And then they have some general utility increases.
How much money is left in the, um, the funds that we raised forward?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but he does also use that money, um, for medical services for the animals, that's used exclusively for.
Booth and Paul gives them money every month, and raise that money.
Yeah, th- this is separate from their donations.
Okay.
It's not a, it's not a large amount, but on the animal control, fifty-five oh-three registration fees, I think it's three thousand or two thousand seven hundred and fifty. What are the, what are those registration fees?
Yeah, that's for, that's actually for, um, the registration for the employees, and that would be, um, I think they have to attend like euthanasia certification classes, um, Bob maintains like a, um, the license so they can distribute like pharmaceutical products for animals and things like that.
So they have to go to training and stuff.
They do, it's certifications that they have to, that one won't come to my head.
And he wants the, uh, animal vet assistant to move up to a vet tick, so she has to take classes for that. And like Ann said, uh, various classes on animal laws, so, yeah, that's why that's increased.
Probably the need it being that we just passed that ordinance now.
Yes.
They had a capital request of two vehicles. And they are, they had, um, yeah, two trucks, uh, requested, and both of those were put forward, um, as a recommendation. I don't think, we didn't, um, we didn't ask Bob to come necessarily.
Those, those have been asked for several years for, and we hadn't been funding. And, yeah, they've been breaking down, so the vehicle service costs have been going up.
Vehicle's definitely needed, without money problem.
The question, the question I had, not about the two B here, because one of them was the, um, whether we could use the smaller trucks, and you said the box on the back, it won't fit, right?
They have boxes, other animal boxes, they have to have larger trucks to fit those, to accommodate them.
I understand, and this is, I guess, for the county administrator, I understand we have a lot of older vehicles with a lot of miles. But I'm also concerned that we need to make sure every department who has vehicles are getting the vehicles serviced like they're supposed to on a regular basis, we're not missing oil changes, we're not going thousands and thousands of miles past oil changes. And that all these vehicles that the taxpayers are paying for, that we taking care of them like we supposed to.
We have written people up for not maintaining vehicles, if they don't get their oil changed, if they don't get them a service regularly, we have, we have, um, again, written people up for that in the past.
And, and the, and the other question I, that I brought forward too, is make sure as we use these vehicles, we use them for business purposes.
Thank you.
Okay. The next department, number nineteen, is probate judge, um, there's a small increase there, it's about four percent, and that probably completely attributed to salaries and retirement increases.
Why would it be more, we gave them, uh, the part-time worker full-time pay last year, she's got full-time pay now.
Right.
Why would they need another eight thousand dollars?
Well, I think that's probably just our tiered increase built in there, and the increase in the retirement system. It's not an additional request, um, for staff or a raise outside of, um, of what has been built in.
Is the elected officials figured into the tier, or is just the employees?
It, it's in there as it's built now, I mean, that would be, um, this one is structured more like a cost of living, even though it's on a tier versus.
That's too much for cost of living.
No, not, not the four percent in this budget, I'm, I'm saying the tiered approach is more, uh, like a cost of living than a merit. So the elected officials are included in that.
Thank you.
The next department is the tax auditor. There is an increase there of about three thousand dollars, um, it's about three percent, and again, that's purely the increase in retirement and, the, the cost of the tiered increase built in there. Uh, the, I think the same, um, is true for the treasurer. There's a seven percent increase there, they do use a temporary employee during tax collections. And, you know, sometimes it varies how many hours that, that person works, but they do have that built in, and they have had, that's usually January, February, March, that they have additional help.
Do the treasurer still have to use, um, someone to come in, that's that person coming in to balance the books and that kinda stuff?
Yes, we still pay for that.
We pay for that, still.
Thank you.
I guess we gotta pay for it, right?
All right, the next department's the clerk of court, again, there's about a three percent increase, which is related, again, to the tiered, um, increase in the retirement system. Family court department, um, it's about a five percent. During the year, this year, two of their employees, we kinda, um, had to equalize their salaries, they were in like positions, and, um, so we equalized that. Otherwise, it's just the regular increases related to the tier in South Carolina retirement system. Um, the next department is the county coroner, um, there's an increase there, about twenty-six thousand dollars. He has requested, um, among other things, but two of the, the main things, was to adjust the office assistant's salary, and to increase the deputy coroner's monthly rate.
And again, per, uh, conversations with council, a recommendation was made to keep the rate three hundred dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and why was that?
Excuse me?
And why was that not to go to four hundred?
Like I said, we were taking recommendations from council in our conversations, and that was one of the things that was put on the list as a recommendation.
I tell you what, um. Would you like to put it on the motions list, Mr. Baz?
Yeah, I'm adding, I'm adding it on there.
All right.
Yes, any of these items as we go through them, wanna make a request, put it on the motions list, please do, and we will then add it for a vote.
Okay.
Sheriff, sheriff.
All right, um, the sheriff's department's next, I think Sheriff Montgomery's here. Operationally, they only have about a two percent increase, which again is related to our, our tier raise, and, uh, for, for them, it's the police officers' retirement system, um, but they have some capital items, um, requested, and I'll let Mr. Taylor and Mr. Montgomery.
Bob, just turn over the sheriff to make the request, I think you have.
Yeah, primarily cars, um, and that's nine vehicles, I think there was a misunderstanding earlier, y'all kept saying ten, but it's nine vehicles, plus the truck, so it would be ten with the truck that we just, uh, talked about. There's equipment for the vehicles, and, uh, mobile radios for the vehicles, and, uh, another thing is media duplication, and that's all pro, we've talked to them about taking all of our old files, our old, uh, reports, and putting them in a, a computer system where we can pull it up in the computer.
Sheriff, I'm sorry, uh, sheriff, all ten of the, or nine of these replacement vehicles, that would be, um, regular patrol cars?
That's correct.
Do you have a number of how many patrol cars you have now?
Um, I don't have it in front of me. I can get that for you.
Okay.
But I don't have it here.
That's fine.
Are they at the point where all of those, uh, has to be replaced now?
We've got four now that's, um, totaled, that we've got to have those four, and then the others are high mileage, um.
Do you have any been taken out of service that you could still use?
Taken out of service that we use? No, we, we don't use any that we take out of service. Once they're taken out of service, they're out of service.
No, what I'm saying is the ones you park, and then give them another car to drive, they're still good, can't you still use it?
Yeah, we'll still use some of those, um, yeah, we did.
Um, on this list is ten, is ten, um, replacement vehicles on this list.
That's what we had on the list, yes.
That was, was submitted to us.
You got ten on you.
I've got nine here, plus the truck.
Okay, that's ten.
Okay.
And the four, we didn't get insurance to cover the four that were totaled, right?
Right.
You said we didn't get insurance to cover the four?
Yes.
Okay.
And sheriff, one other question, like I asked county administrator, um, just making sure. I understand wrecks are gonna happen, things gonna happen, but when they do, and the vehicles are wrecked, or the deputies facing any kinda consequences or anything, if it's their fault?
Yes, we have a wreck review board, um, I would invite all of y'all to come see what we do. That's something I've asked y'all to do in the past, but please come down and see what we do as far as that goes, but yeah, we would welcome y'all to come check that out.
Is it any way you can notify us when that happens, I mean, when, when?
You can give me a call and come by the office any time, we can show you exactly step by step what we go through.
I want, I wanna say there was a policy enacted maybe about seven years ago also that stated if, uh, county employee was found at fault, they may be charged X amount of dol- a hundred dollars or something like that. I think that still is, is in place, so.
So you have that in your policy as well?
That's in our policy now.
Did county employee have to pay?
It's a percentage of possibly, depending on, uh, how this review board goes, who's at fault and how the accident happened.
I don't think y'all have to pay.
If it's their fault.
That's how you do it.
Is there a fault?
Sir.
I'm just saying, he's saying that you don't think that they should be charged, I think, but if, if they're negligent, they should be.
That's why we had a review board, to see, you know, what happened there.
Anything else from council? Add it to the, uh, the list?
One other question, I'm sorry, for the sheriff, do you have any spare vehicles? I know that when they wreck a vehicle, they need a spare vehicle, do you have anything for these deputies to drive that's a spare vehicle?
Right now, we're completely out of spares. We're using unmarked vehicles now for patrol vehicles.
Sheriff, you know how many vehicles in your fleet, I know you probably.
I'm not off the top of my head.
Uh, there's, um, it was a total of seventy, seventy-nine, but they're down seven.
Okay.
And I know you need new vehicles, my last question, I know you need new vehicles, nine of them, but is there a way that we could replenish the spare vehicles, like, is there a place where we could buy two or three spare vehicles that has like a hundred thousand miles on them or something, to use them as spare vehicles?
We could take the vehicles that we're replacing and put them down, and, and use them as spare vehicles.
My thinking is what is going, doing the ten B, truck and the other nine.
Would you have a mileage preference that once a patrol car get to a certain mileage, that we take it off the road?
I would say a hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, you got to take in consideration that these vehicles are also used for chase vehicles, and the liability for the deputies.
Not including idle miles.
Right, so that's, that's the liability. And we've got several vehicles that are over that.
That was one twenty-five, that was one twenty-five.
Why did a SRO officer drive?
Do what now?
Why did a SRO officer?
Why did the SRO officer drive?
They have different vehicles.
Or are they driving any of the ones that should be on the road and them driving the ones that are high mile?
Well, they work the road also. They're patrolling right now, they're out of school.
Where you go, the data, you talk about data, I don't think that we have that.
That's all pro solutions, we've talked about that, um.
Yeah, I, I think we talked about maybe y'all were still gathering some quotes and stuff.
Okay, okay.
We'll get us those quotes, we'll look back at that. Apparently, we don't have it.
And the mileage for the replacement vehicles range from, I'd say a hundred and sixty-eight thousand to two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
And, and that's what I'm thinking, we are, you know, he, he's just, you know, he got the truck for one of the vehicles, so he's asking for nine plus the truck.
Um.
Mister, I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor, if we did buy the, the ten, nine vehicles, other vehicles that, where we would send them to auction?
We typically send them to auction, but again, I, I'd like.
I know we talk about this every year, because we run into this problem.
There may be some that could be called through and kept.
Yeah, we can look through them. Last year, we had eight, or seven, I think, brought to the maintenance shop. And they automatically, for some reason, got sent to auction. So that's, that's why we got so far behind.
Yeah, I think they were stripped beforehand, so.
Still don't know who approved that, but those, those vehicles got sent to auction for some reason. Put us way behind.
Why do we get out of?
I have no idea. Like I said, they went to auction.
Typically not that much. Again, I'd rather hold what we can and continue to get some use out of it. Or we might could shuffle it to, to somewhere that is appropriate.
Most time they have over two hundred thousand miles on them when they get to that point.
I think we do have the mileage list there, don't you have that Laura?
Yes.
Yeah, what'd you say, one sixty to two twenty-five?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That's a lot of miles, y'all.
So you, so, so, Mr. Taylor, you only recommended three?
Well, we could do more than three, again, this is going to be a council decision.
It's up to council.
But, um, we did cut everything down severely as part of our budget.
SRO?
The next two departments are sub-departments of the sheriff's department, the SRO contract. And then we've broken out the SRO for the STEM that we approved. I think the council approved that previously a year. And both of these are reimbursed by the schools. But they show on our operating budget and then the revenue shows in revenue.
If the STEM position money goes away, that means we paying for another position for it.
I think it was.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor. The SRO end the vehicles, I think. If, I said, if that STEM position was to be unfunded by the state, we would end up having to maintain that position. Right, they're going to pay for it at this next. Final period. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip back one more time, back to the tax auditor.
Okay.
There had been a position request there and I'm gonna.
Sure.
Um, I'll let Mr. Calder explain that position request.
And I had a, I also have the explanation that Gary sent also. I can read that at a different time.
That suffice, or you still want to see Mr. Han?
I mean, he can read it, that's fine.
Okay.
Which one y'all want me to do? I'll do an auditor while I'm on.
I thought we were going to take a break at eight.
Yeah, we, I'm just trying to finish these last two, we'll take a break, if that's okay with y'all. Yeah.
Um, that for the tax auditor, uh, says due to increased workload with new changes in laws and having to close office when out at lunchtime, I'm requesting a full-time employee for this office. It's becoming almost impossible to run the office efficiently with just two people. And I can speak to this too. And Miss, Miss Peggy asked me to, um, relay that, you know, she is probably coming towards the end of her tenure at some point. And there's only two people in that office. And I think we've only got like one other department in the whole county with just two people in there. And there's a lot of knowledge, uh, with Miss Peggy. Uh, I think her assistant has been there a few years, but there are several things that she told me that she doesn't have time to explain to her. And should something happen to any of us, um, the, the county would be in a lot of liability there and risk to have to come in and, and, uh, run that office effectively without, you know, one of those people. You got one person, you would have essentially have one person in the whole county that would have experience in that office.
What salary are we talking about?
It would just be entry level.
What department is that?
Tax auditor.
Auditor's office.
Yeah.
She does need some help. All right, Carol.
You want me to read here?
Yes, sir, Mr. Han.
Our office has become increasingly busy over the past several years. Real estate transactions seem to have increased, which has in turn increased our workload with regard to deed transfers and associated paperwork. One of our positions was eliminated several years ago. And currently, one appraiser is splitting time as agent for the forfeited land commission. And our deputy assessor is also managing the GIS department. These deal assignments tend to stretch us pretty thin and makes it extremely difficult to keep up with our daily workflow. Our temporary position has been a huge asset for us over the past year, but is limited in the tasks he's allowed to perform by not having an appraisal license. As this, as that position will be ending soon, I would like to transition to a new full-time position. Looking to the future, Fairfield County is, is poised to grow, for growth, which means even more of an increased workload in the coming years. My goal by hiring someone full-time is to get ahead of that curve by being able to train in-house and achieve a certified residential master appraisers license in two years. Right out of the gate, this new hire will be able to alleviate stress on coworkers by handling a portion of the deed transfers and general paperwork that flows through the office daily. A new full-time position would help our team stay up to date on paperwork and filing as well as answering tax-related questions from our taxpayers, which is crucial to the smooth operation of our office.
Well, the guy that's doing the forfeit, um, land thing for the county, he doesn't work eight hours a day on it. I mean, it might be an hour, two, or three a week. He doesn't work full-time. You got somebody in there part-time now, bonds, he's leaving. They need somebody in there part-time that can appraise. They don't need a full, another full-time person in there. To me, if you got a part-time that's leaving, and you're, you're replacing the part-time with a full-time, I mean, you already had a part-time in there, so you're really just bumping the part-time employee up to full-time. Having to pay retirement and everything like that.
But in this, you know, I, I think also we used to have two additional ones in there.
I agree.
That they lost them. So this would just be funding back those really.
I agree.
The dent would go away and you would fund the full-time position. So, yeah, like you were saying, essentially, it's not the whole cost of a brand-new position. It's just funding a little more for a full-time.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but one of the things, um, um, the person that's doing part of the forfeited land commission, they assume that duty is, um, you know, that you've got a couple of people in the tax collector's office, one of them, those person might could do some of that work. I mean, I, I don't see why you need to add anybody in there. Anybody.
Yeah, we'll put, on most of them. We'll just find out when we vote on it, because I don't think. Right. Want to take a quick recess and grab a bite? Who you got? I made hot dogs. Hot dog.
Do we, one quick question, do you still want me to ask Gary to come to the next meeting? Are you satisfied? Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. All right, intent a motion to take a recess. I'll make a motion to take a recess.
Second.
All right, at this time, we are at recess.
How long, Mr. Chair?
Twenty-five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we get Laura to be a part of this meeting?
I just mess with the sheet right there.
We're gonna go ahead and do fire or EMS first.
Fire.
Okay. Okay. All right, I entertain a motion to...
Second it.
To move and proper second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Ayes have it, back into budget work session.
All right.
All right, Ms. Bass.
All right, we're gonna skip ahead and do fire and EMS, so they can go on home. So, all the fire budgets, you can see each fire department has its own budget, which basically is utilities. Those are all the same, down in one hundred, one zero two, zero two one, which is the fire services, general operating. That's where all their salaries and the other operational costs are. We had a personnel request there. When was to take a temporary position to full-time, and that was a training officer. And then, of course, some other changes, that amount does not represent that total. The seventy-five thousand is not the cost of that position, that's a big piece of it. And then some other operational changes, and then they have some capital. But, Mr. Pope, go ahead and explain.
And I will say, let me add to that. Mr. Pope's gonna do something a little different than some of the departments. He did have another request, and we may bring that back to you mid-year. But he had a fire marshal request, which we did drop back out of this. But he also had a fee schedule that you all consider. And if we did the fee schedule, if you all were interested in putting that in place, that may generate enough revenues to cover the other position that he had requested, but that we dropped out.
It's a fee schedule.
He's probably about to explain it now, but I wanna make sure I understand. That temp position right now, is that a training officer now? Or is that another different position?
Yes, sir, it's a training officer.
Where our position is?
It's a, I don't think it's classified, well, I don't know how Anne has it classified, probably is a position, it has needed employee. Yeah, we pay them five hours, fifteen hours a month, is what we pay them. There we go.
Okay.
So, since we already asked some questions, then what would we do with that person that doing that job now?
Well, if, if the, if the position is fully funded, in other words, if the money stays, and this would be something maybe for admin, if the money stays there, I would like to continue to have the one we have now, it's kinda like an assistant, to help out. But it's kinda depending on how they, you know, on how the money's gonna really fall. But...
He could be a paid firefighter too, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. That's the one huge benefit of this full-time position, is we'd get another daytime fire suppression personnel too. Cause they'd be on payroll, you know, they'd be a soured employee. So, that's another huge benefit. If, if the budget allows, again, we'd keep him, but if it's, if it becomes a, the part-time, I'm saying. But if it becomes more of a, hey, we're taking money here, then we would have to get away with that temporary position.
So, would you have enough, if, would you have enough work? If, if we get the paid person, I mean, the training officer. So, the person then, that doing the training for the volunteers, you would no longer need him?
Well, again, it would be nice if he, if he was still able to do that, because we, on the training sessions, you know, we'll have twenty, and you know, Mr. Bell on the eastern side, we'll have thirty people at training sessions. So, that's a lot of people to train. So, if, if, again, if we're able to retain, and that's an as-needed, that's a lump sum line item in our account, or as-needed, where we pay the volunteer stipend, and the as-needed employees are all out of one account. I think it's like a hundred and seventy thousand, I think is what it is. And that, that fluctuates, because we have part-time employees, they work different kind of hours. I manage that budget, I make sure we don't go over budget, and that, because they're all as-needed. So, again, if the budget allows, we could keep it, we could keep that person doing that, cause he does a great job for us. He's a wonderful, you know, part of our team. We're just, we're just trying to move, progress, and go even forward, a little bit farther. So, that's what the desire would be, if the money's there, to do it.
Continue.
More about training officer, is that what?
Let's go over the training officer, then get to the other fire marshal position.
Okay, the, so, what's changed so much in the last, you know, thirty years? And, you know, when you came into the fire department thirty years ago, it took about forty hours for the training. Now, it takes two hundred hours of training, just to get in the door, where you actually can perform the functions of a firefighter. So, training has changed. The biggest change for us is when we have added full-time staffing to the roles of the department. Cause a full-time employee, the relationship that I have with a full-time employee is completely different than with a volunteer. And so, with a full-time employee, I'm required by OSHA and by ISO, to give that full-time firefighter sixteen hours of training on shift every month. So, that's completely, that's a whole different relationship, that's one whole day, basically, every week, that we're having to bring our paid staff, we only have four of them right now, bring those into a central location to provide on-job training, or training on shift is what I mean. I can't do it at nighttime. And that's, that's sixteen hours, that's every month of ongoing training. So, we need somebody on our staff who can do that, that keeps us out of trouble with ISO and with OSHA, and can also help us, you know, with the volunteer training as well, at nighttime. So, it'll be a flexible position, this person, whoever the qualified candidate, if you fund it, will have to be able to work some flexible hours, you know, they're gonna have to be at it nights, and on weekends, and also meet the training needs of our full-time staff.
That's kinda mandated, correct? I mean, we don't have a choice?
We have to provide that training to the full-time staff. Yes, sir, we have to.
One of the, one of the things too is, now, when we hired Greg Gerber, one of the things he was to be responsible for was the training.
Correct.
So, I guess he moved on from that piece.
Well, he'll still be supervised, the training officer will report to him. Training will still be under his purview. He'll be over, he's the operations chief, basically, we've done, you know, some reorganization within the fire department. And he's the operator, he's the deputy chief over operations, so the training officer will report to him. So, he would still be over training, but he would have some help.
Continue.
The...
Fee schedule?
Fee schedule, yep, we can do that. So, what we did is, we looked at what we have done, we've had a part-time fire inspector for a little over a year now. And so, I asked him to go back and do some homework for us, and to basically create a draft fee schedule. We looked at other counties, our size, we looked at Cherokee County, we looked at, I believe, Lancaster County, a lot of other counties that were similar size, rural size, and say, okay, what are y'all doing? And I'll give you, and all this can be emailed as needed. But basically, what the fee schedule, there's a range, and I can, it gets, you know, if you're familiar with plan review, there's a scale for plan review, because anytime Mr. Clussen's shop passes it to a plan review, a lot of times they have to get pulled in on the fireside. So, we'll get it shipped in, so we're doing a lot of the same level of work that his shop is doing. The, we, so it's a basic plan for site building and fire plan review services, it depends on the size, there's a range from a hundred dollars to four hundred dollars. Again, it's depending on square footage. The same thing, there would be a fee for fire sprinkler and fire alarm plan review services, that range would be a hundred to, a hundred plus, and then it's fifty cents per head device based on the sprinkler system. We have fire and life safety inspection services, those are a range from zero to a hundred and fifty dollars. We have fines, which is something we've never had before, for emergent or repetitive life safety violations. Basically, gives us some teeth to say, hey, if you don't do this, you can be fined. That's the last resort, we don't, we don't choose to fine people, that's if you have repeat offenders. That ranges from a hundred to five hundred dollars. Operational fire permits, such as the ones required by the fire code, there's a range from fifty to five hundred, and there's construction fire permits, there's a range from fifty to three hundred dollars. Again, I have a detailed breakdown, it's rather lengthy, so you might not want me to go over that now, but it can all be emailed to you, and you can have that information there to look at it. One thing that, that Mr. Taylor mentioned, so we looked last year. If this fee schedule that we're proposing, if it had been in place last year, based on the work we did, it would have generated almost thirty thousand dollars in revenue. If it was in place last year, I mean, that's a considerable amount, it helps pay for a position. You know, which is part of the justification of trying to, as Mr. Taylor mentioned, looking to you to, hey, this is, this could fund this position. You know, plus what we're already paying that part-time position, then you have a full-time employee, so...
I don't see, on this fee schedule, I don't see anything on here for just a regular homeowner, and that's good.
That's correct, yeah, we don't get involved residential. This is all commercial industrial stuff. Right, that's right. Yeah, all business, commercial, nothing residential.
Anything else from council?
We would like to know, to kinda gauge councils' desire, do you, is this something you're interested in? Or should we pursue it and bring it back, develop it further, or are you...
I honestly thought we had something like this in place already, but I guess not.
You're talking about the fees schedule?
Right.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Fee schedule, we would develop that, bring that on, then kinda gauge it to see where we go, and then come back possibly to add more hours to this inspector's position.
So, this is compatible to Kershaw, Newbury, surrounding counties?
It's, it's common practice.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
What'd you just say, Mr. Taylor?
I think it's relatively common practice.
Oh, I ain't talking before that about the inspector. I'm a training officer.
Let me add to that. Mr. Pope's gonna do something a little different than some other departments. He did have another request, and we may bring that back to you mid-year. But he had a fire marshal request, which we did drop back out of this. But he also had a fee schedule that you all consider. And if we did the fee schedule, if you all were interested in putting that in place, that may generate enough revenues to cover the other position that he had requested, but that we dropped out.
It's a fee schedule.
He's probably about to explain it now, but I want to make sure you understand. That temp position right now, is that a training officer now? Or is that another different position?
Yes, sir, it's a training officer. We've, we've-
And where your position is?
It's a, I don't think it's classified, well, I don't know how Anne has it classified. Probably is a position, it has needed employee. Yeah, we pay them five hours, fifteen hours a month is what we pay them. There we go.
Okay.
Okay.
So, since we already asked some questions, then what would, what would we do with that, that person that doing that job now?
Well, if, if the, if the position is fully funded, in other words, if the money stays, and this will be something maybe for admin, if the money stays there, I would like to, to continue to have the one we have now, it's kind of like an assistant, you know, to help out. But it's kind of depending on how they, you know, on how the money's going to really fall. But-
He could be a paid firefighter too, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. The, the, that's the one huge benefit of this full-time position, is we'd get another daytime fire suppression personnel too, because they'd be on payroll. It, you know, they'd be a soured employee. So, that, that's another huge benefit. If, if the budget allows, again, we'd keep them, but if it's, if it becomes a, the part-time, I'm saying, but if it becomes more of a, hey, we're taking money here, then we would have to get away with that, that temporary position.
So, so would you have enough, if, would you have enough work? If, if we get the paid person, I mean, the training officer? So, the person then that doing the training for the volunteers, you would no longer need him?
Well, again, it would be nice if he, if he was still able to, to do that, because we, on the training sessions, you know, we'll have twenty, and you know, Mr. Bell on, on the eastern side, we'll have thirty people at training sessions. So, that's a lot of people to train. So, if, if, again, if we're able to retain, and it's, that's an as needed, that's a lump sum, a line item in our account, or as needed, where we pay the volunteer stipend, and the as needed, the as needed employees are all out of one account. I think it's like a hundred and seventy thousand, I think is what it is. And that, that fluctuates, because we have part-time employees, they work different kind of hours that, I manage that budget, I make sure we don't go over budget, and that, because they're all as needed. So, again, if the budget allows, we, we could keep it, we could keep that person doing that, because he does a great job for us. He's a wonderful, you know, part of our team. We're just, we're just trying to move, you know, progress and go even forward, a little bit farther. So, that's what the desire would be, if the money's there, to do it.
Continue.
More about training officer, is that what?
Let's go over the training officer, then we'll get to the other fire marshal position.
Okay, the, so, what's changed so much in the last, you know, thirty years? And, you know, when you came into the fire department thirty years ago, it took about forty hours for the training. Now, it takes two hundred hours of training, just to get in the door, where you actually can perform the functions of a firefighter. So, training has changed. The biggest change for us is when we have added full-time staffing to the, the roles of the department. Because a full-time employee, the relationship that I have with a full-time employee is completely different than with a volunteer. And so, with a full-time employee, I'm required by OSHA and by ISO to give that full-time firefighter sixteen hours of training on shift every month. So, that is completely, that's a whole different relationship. That's one whole day, basically, every week, that we're having to bring our paid staff, we only have four of them right now, bring those into a central location to provide on the job training, or training on shift is what I mean. I can't do it at nighttime. And that's, that's sixteen hours, that's every month of ongoing training. So, we need somebody on our staff who can do that, that keeps us out of trouble with ISO and with OSHA, and can also help us, you know, with the volunteer training as well at nighttime. So, it'll be a flexible position. This person, whoever the qualified candidate, if you fund it, will have to be able to work some flexible hours, you know, they're gonna have to be at at nights and on weekends, and also meet the training needs of our full-time staff.
That's kind of mandated, correct? I mean, we don't have a choice?
We have to provide that training to the full-time staff. Yes, sir, we have to.
One of the, one of the things too is, now, when we hired Greg Gerber, one of the things he was, was to be responsible for was the training.
Correct.
So, I guess he moved on from that piece.
Well, he'll still be supervised, the training officer will report to him. Training will still be under his purview. He'll be over, he's the operations chief, basically, we've done, you know, some reorganization within the fire department, and he's the opera, he's the deputy chief over operations. So, the training officer will report to him. So, he would still be over training, but he would have some help.
Continue.
The-
Fee schedule?
Fee schedule, yep, we can do that. So, what we did is, we looked at what we have done, we've had a part-time fire inspector for a little over a year now. And so, I asked him to go back and do some homework for us, and to basically create a draft fee schedule. We looked at other counties, our size, we looked at Cherokee County, we looked at, I believe Lancaster County, a lot of other counties that were similar size, rural size, and say, okay, what are y'all doing? And I'll give you, and all this can be emailed as needed. But basically, what the fee schedule, there's a range, and I can, it gets, you know, if you're familiar with plan review, there's a scale for plan review, because anytime Mr. Clussen's shop passes to a plan review, a lot of times they have to get pulled in on the fireside. So, we'll get it, you know, shipped in. So, we're doing a lot of the same level of work that his shop is doing. The, we, so it's a basic plan for site building and fire plan review services, it depends on the size, there's a range from a hundred dollars to four hundred dollars. Again, it's, it's depending on square footage. The same thing, there would be a fee for fire sprinkler and fire alarm plan review services, that range would be a hundred to, a hundred plus, and then it's fifty cents per head device based on the sprinkler system. We have fire and life safety inspection services, those are a range from zero to a hundred and fifty dollars. We have fines, which is something we've never had before, for emergent or repetitive life safety violations, basically gives us some teeth to say, hey, if, if you don't do this, you can be fined. That's the last resort, we don't, we don't choose to fine people, that's if you have repeat offenders. That ranges from a hundred to five hundred dollars. Operational fire permits, such as the ones required by the fire code, there's a range from fifty to five hundred, and there's construction fire permits, that's a range from fifty to three hundred dollars. Again, I have a detailed breakdown, it's, it's rather lengthy, so you might not want me to go over that now, but it can all be emailed to you, and you can have that information there to look at it. One thing that, that Mr. Taylor mentioned, so we looked last year, if this fee schedule that we're proposing, if it had been in place last year, based on the work we did, it would have generated almost thirty thousand dollars in revenue. If it was in place last year, I mean, that's a considerable amount of rep, helps pay for a position, you know, which is part of the justification of trying to, as Mr. Taylor mentioned, looking to you to, hey, this is, this could fund this position, you know, plus what we're already paying that part-time position, then you have a full-time employee, so.
I don't see, on this fee schedule, I don't see anything on here for just a regular homeowner, and that's good. Am I looking at it right?
That's correct, yeah, we don't get involved residential. This is all commercial industrial stuff. Right, that's right. Yeah, all, all business, commercial, nothing residential.
Anything else from council?
We would like to know, to kind of gauge councils' desire, do you, is this something you're interested in, or should we pursue it and bring it back, develop it further, or are you-
I honestly thought we had something like this in place already, but I guess not.
You're talking, you're talking about the fees schedule?
Right.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Fee schedule, we would develop that, bring that on, then kind of gauge it to see where we go, and then come back possibly to add more hours to this inspector's position.
So, this is compatible to Kershaw, Newbury, surrounding counties?
It's, it's common practice.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
What'd you just say, Mr. Taylor?
I think it's relatively common practice.
Oh, I ain't talking before that about the inspector. I'm a training officer.
Not, the training officer is different than the inspector, or the fire marshal.
Correct.
The fire marshal's position right now is funded twenty-nine hours, if I'm not mistaken. And if we put this fee in place, Jason earlier asked us to take that from twenty-nine hours to a full-time position, putting the fee in place would generate enough revenue to cover the additional hours to make it full-time.
Yeah, the goal was, at Mr. Taylor's request, we're trying to make it budget neutral, so it's not an impact. I believe it, even on the conservative side, it, it may just be that, might be budget neutral.
Again, this is pushing, instead of just, our property taxes covering all costs, sometimes we have user fees cover cost.
And, and your thinking is now, is that if you get the fire training officer, you would still keep the part-time?
Again, if budget allows, we can, we would keep it. If, 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 that's a fluid account, I mean, it, 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 there's people that move in and out of that, I see that, that money every month, as, as needed employee, it'd be great to keep them, if we could.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any capital?
I saw what, I knew what I asked, but I don't know where it landed on the cutting board.
There's a difference between what most people have.
Yeah, I know, okay, so, you tell me what I need to-
Anne, if you want to go over that.
All right, back to the capital sheet. That's the, the long one without the stripes. The fire service had, they had a couple of vehicles contingent on positions being filled, so we put one forth, one of those for recommendation based on the training officer. Then they had some other items that were not necessarily put forth, just trying to, to hold off and purchases, you know, keep this capital budget as small as possible. And then they had two sets of extrication equipment, and we recommended one of those. I guess if y'all have any questions about any of that, I can answer those.
I have another question. One of them is, I know the tanker at Southeastern, they had a, they had rusted, the tank rusted up, so I think it's about thirty years old. And you're gonna have to, tell me what you're gonna have to do with that?
Pretty much we have to, if, to keep the truck in service, we gotta replace the tank. It'd cost about ten thousand dollars to replace it.
How much?
Ten thousand.
Okay.
Replace the tank.
So, so the plans are to go ahead and, okay, even though it's a thirty-year-old truck?
Well, that, that's, at this point, is our only option. With that, I mean, even if y'all funded another tanker, I mean, it'd be a year before we had it, probably.
That's the one that's on the sheet?
What, the, the position we'll be in, as soon as the south, the new fire station on River Road is built, we have two pieces of equipment to go into that building. We want, we've, we've saved some stuff back. As soon as those pieces, and we're probably, I don't know, six months or a year, I guess, maybe, from that coming online, I'm trying to guess, but as soon as that equipment goes into that station, we'll, we'll be really limited on, we won't have anything in reserve. In other words, if something, we'll have two reserve engines, we have to have two reserve engines, you have to have two for every, I think, ten or fifteen engines, you gotta have two, which we'll have that, but we'll be kind of limited at that point. So, we'll be coming to you again next year and say, hey, I need another one.
Yeah, we're gonna have to come back and, and get some tankers for these rule late.
Yeah, they're, I mean, two thousand gallon tankers are, you know, an engine, a thousand gallon engine and two thousand gallon tanker is what our, our ISO rating is based on hard water, so it's not based on hydrants, because we don't have hydrants in this county. And so, the, the ISO man looks at how many gallons of water you bring into the fire, and, and that's the bread and butter, that a thousand gallon engine and two thousand gallon tanker, which you don't have currently at Southeastern, there's two thousand gallon
Silverado?
And Southeastern is a, is a six with no oil.
Correct.
But that's really good.
That's, that's really good, actually, yes, it is.
Capital.
Now, the Silverado is for the new training officer, if it's approved, correct?
We actually made a, a change, is that correct, Ms. Anne?
Yeah, he had, one of the trucks was a larger truck that had a service body on it, and since we decided to only fund the one position, he requested we fund it with the service style truck.
Really, this is the direction I want to, I don't want to buy any more half-time pickup trucks, and the, we have two for staff positions, because, you know, I ride around all day, so I want something comfortable, but these guys need something they can work in. And so, the desire is to purchase a, it's a two fifty truck, I think the quote is, it's right around, it'll, it'll cost me about fifty-five to put, to buy the truck, put the service body, we're gonna put, not a standard service body like you'd see like at a maintenance truck with the, with the pull-out doors, we can put roll-up doors on it. It's much easier to use at a fire scene, an emergency scene, we can get to the scene, roll up the doors, get the stuff off of it. The one set of these extrication tools will go in the back of that truck, we're gonna put a cover on it to make it weather tight, and put a rollout tray in it, so it'll be a multi-purpose vehicle. We'll have this, this training officer person in, again, that's, that's a responder, that's a daytime responder, and this truck will, it'll be busy.
Can you explain the fire station renovation year two?
We, so, last year, you know, we, or this current budget year, we funded to start renovating fire stations, and it was based on a financial analysis that another company helped us with, it was a little lacking, probably, we found some, some deficiencies in that engineering firm's estimates. However, we worked with it, we had pretty much a hundred and sixty thousand dollars this year to spend on fire station renovations, we started that project, we finished Lebanon is, almost was basically finished. We were going to Ridgeway next, we kind of run out of time here, we're probably gonna do something at a time and money, we're gonna do something at the Feasterville Fire Station, probably, because they desperately need something up there. Yes, we were wanting to, to, to keep doing that, and, and the, the reason why is today, tomorrow, sometime very soon, this council, this county, will have to put on more paid firemen, will, will have to. It is not a if, it's just a when. And so, we've got to get these facilities ready for daytime people, and eventually twenty-four, seven people. It's, we just have to, we, when it comes to staffing, NFPA seventeen-twenty is what rule, what governs, what role of fire staffing should be, and we've never been able to meet their requirements, what they require for manpower and time on scene. So, I, I looked at our data last year, we, we've never met that, we've never met what NFPA says that you're supposed to do in a rural fire department, in terms of staffing and response and timeline. So, it's coming, so the hard part is getting our facilities ready, and it just, it just takes-
But we do not have that budget this year.
Yeah, that's, that's not. Extrication equipment, that's if the position is funded, correct?
Well, that's really not tied to position, no, sir.
Okay.
No, sir, we're, we're, what we're trying to do, we work really well with our rescue squad, we're trying to enhance the service that they deliver, and put some, some more modern rescue tools, these are hydraulic tools, these are the new ones that are, EMS has some of them, they are just, they're state-of-the-art, but they're much easier to use, and I want to put a set, I asked for, we asked for two, I think it's budgeted, one, the theory was to put one set on the eastern side of the county, one on the western side. If we only get one, then I'm not a hundred percent sure where I'll put it yet, but, because somebody won't be happy, but, you know, it'll be okay. It, it is what it is.
Is there any from council?
So I can be clear, everything is included, is self, the Silverado, correct? So I can exit it out.
The only thing that isn't-
Roto tanker.
You've got the eighty-five thousand dollar vehicle and a thirty-five thousand dollar piece of equipment, that's the only thing that is.
Included.
Included.
Okay. That's what I got.
I got you.
Thank you, Mr. Pope.
Thank y'all.
All right, now we'll move to Department 101 for EMS. All right. Their operational budget went up about three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, that's about eight percent of their total operations. A big piece of that is replacement of tough books, which is the laptop computers and ten IV pumps. Those are both, I think they were originally requested with the capital because of the total cost, but as individual pieces of equipment, they did not meet the capital test, so they're actually operational items. And then, of course, regular personnel increases associated with retirement and, and a potential wage increase. Do y'all have any questions about the operation? And then, they also have capital requests. There was an initial request for three ambulances, there was a recommendation to purchase one this year, then they have a request for a CAD and AVL routing system, which is also a capital purchase. And I'll let Mike answer any questions about those.
Why wouldn't the tough books be up under expenses?
Because just individually, they're not, they don't meet the threshold?
They, they are, they're under operating expenses.
Operating expenses?
As individual pieces of equipment, they don't meet the five thousand dollar threshold. As a total, they obviously would, but, and the same thing with IV pumps.
Is this replacement stuff, you gonna be able to do anything differently?
On which item?
On, on everything for the eight percent, the ten tough books, the IV pumps, is that just replacement?
Yeah, this is replacing old antiquated equipment that's no longer serviced. IT department did what they could with this, with the laptops that we have, we have Panasonic tough books right now, they're six years old, and, and a laptop that's six years old, it's amazing that they lasted that long. But DHEAT Regulation sixty-one dash seven says we have to do an electronic patient care report within twenty-four hours, and it has to be encrypted, and this allows us to do that on the newer, the laptops. But they are replacing six-year-old laptops, and the IV pumps that we have now, they don't make the tubing for them anymore, because they're that old, and this would replace those. And that, of course, you know, the IV pumps allows us to give medications and exact amounts on some of the more critical drugs that we do give in the field.
I brought, I brought a, a guy to the Miford EMS station, where he cut his thumb off. I guess you're familiar with that one, but he cut his thumb off, okay, they got him to the hospital and everything, and his thumb is back on.
Nice.
It is.
Awesome.
Awesome story.
Capital book?
Any questions for capital or EMS?
Just have one ambulance and routing system.
I just pray it's not them ambulances that been burning up.
Yeah, I know. I did include the mileage is, just to give you guys a good example of what we're dealing with as far as our aging fleet. Eleven years ago, we, we bought three ambulances, and they're definitely at the end of their service life, but they're out there as frontline trucks right now, when we don't have spares. And they're well over two hundred thousand miles and, and ten years old, and, and I'd invite any one of you guys to come take a ride in one of those with us one day, just to see how they ride. We definitely need to get them replaced as soon as we can.
Routing interface and system, that's just dealing computer?
Yeah, what that does is, it automatically connects the existing CAD information that's in dispatch, it's not going outside vendor, this is the same vendor, and what this does is automatically send all the call information back and forth from crews to dispatch, dispatch can see exactly where the truck is, exactly where the call is, and it automatically tells them who's the fastest and the fastest route. It just, it increases our response time, and it increases, increases the information that we hear back and forth.
That'll be included in the tough books?
No, that's a, that's a separate system.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. All right, now we'll skip back up to Department number twenty-seven, back on the sheet that has the shaded lines, the magistrate's office.
Still the thumb, still, he's still got the thumb, that's awesome, for real.
Yeah, I, I was, he cut his thumb completely off.
Wow.
Found his thumb, put a, put a tourniquet on it, took him to the EMS station.
How'd he manage to cut it off?
Um, he's cut it off with a skill saw.
Ooh.
And we had to find his thumb. Didn't, I tell you what, it didn't bother me then, but boy, afterwards, I said, oh, man.
You got PTSD now?
But, but training comes in good.
I'm sorry, Anne, I just, I just had to ask about the thumb, I'm sorry.
So, the magistrate's office, they have an increase of about three percent, and I think it's mostly associated with salaries and benefits. The Voter Registration Election Commission-
Hold on a minute, I got a question about the magistrate. Is that the tier, is that the reason for the increase?
That would be for the office employees, yes, Anne?
Yeah, so normally, I think the magistrate judges have gotten the cost of living raises, but the state now has a tier kind of process of their own. They pretty much tell you what the judge's increases would be after each year of service that we have to follow through the state, so.
The Voter Registration Election Commission, they have an increase of about twelve percent this year, and most of that is associated with it being an election year, particularly a presidential election year.
They have to hire so many?
Yeah, tend, tend to use a lot more of the employees that work at the election polls, and, and they'll have to have some absentee staff, and, you know, that could take an entirely different shape right now, in terms of the absentee, so it could actually even change.
One of the things that's, that's coming up, a, a lot of states is closing election sites, polling places. We gotta make sure this county don't close any, need to keep them all open.
All right, the next department is the Department of Social Services, and that's our DSS department, and it is about a three thousand dollar increase, and they requested-
Foster care program.
That's right, their foster care.
It's a program that they've normally got in the past, along with some medical costs, and last year it was, they, they didn't request it, they had turnover with directors, and so now they requesting it back again.
For some reason, I'm thinking we gotta do the roof at DSS too.
That's one we did have, and we put off for a year or so, and that one's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that was the estimate, so we put it off one more year, we hope to, to pick that up next year and do it.
Got you.
Okay. The next department is the Veterans Affairs Department. It had a little bit of an increase, about sixteen thousand dollars, and that's primarily related to medical insurance. And, you know, that, that just happens with general turnover sometimes, the employee that was previously in that department did not take the medical insurance, and the current employee does. So, that's just a cost that, the potential has always been there, but we just didn't have it. The next department is our delegation department, and that department's essentially just a flat budget there. The airport is next, so one percent, and that's gonna be accredited to the, any, you know, cost of living adjustments that we might give, and South Carolina retirement system. Emergency management, airport does have capital, thank you. They, they had a capital request for a, a vehicle and for a hangar door. The maintenance hangar door is the only item that was put forth for recommendation, I think it was decided that we could probably internally find a vehicle that would be suitable for the airport.
Maintenance hangar door, that's a safety issue at this point. Maintenance hangar door, that's a safety issue at this point.
Mr. Taylor, can you explain to me why the airport would need a off-road vehicle, a four-by-four?
That's the one he's not.
That's the one that's not approved.
Yeah, we're not recommending.
It was requested, but not approved.
He's just not recommending.
So I really can't because we dropped it.
Yeah.
And the only thing we were recommending there is the hangar door, and that is, that's a safety issue, someone could get hurt or killed.
All right, the next.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is the emergency management department. They have about a six percent increase. That is some annual maintenance agreements for their new programs, like the code red and the, the new nine-one-one, smart nine-one-one program.
Which is good programs too, all of them.
The next, we're gonna, we'll come back to.
I got, I got a question. This is the one I was trying to ask about earlier, is the trailer that they use, tell me about that trailer, Mr. Taylor. With the supplies in it for, for being able to respond to a.
It's a deconnect, the decontamination.
Yeah.
Billis' trailer, yes, that's under.
That they have and it's, it's ready to go out at any time there's. It could be used for training and, and some of our other emergency people are going to get trained on that. And it can go out for any event, I mean, it's fully equipped. And, but if, you know, if something happens, it's ready, it's ready to go.
Yeah, I hear that, I guess during this coronavirus thing, Fire had requested the use of it.
At the time, they didn't request the use of it. Fire had wanted it to be stationed at one of the fire stations. And that wasn't a necessity for it to be housed at a fire station. Because where it is now is under lock and key, is gated.
Okay.
But yeah, but they can use it and get it for training, they have to be trained on it first. And yeah, but at any time there's an event, yeah, they can come and get it.
Okay.
We'll skip the allocations, we'll come back to that after we finish the departments and, and look at those together. So the next department we have is the Parks and Recreation Department. Operationally, they had about a three percent change. And that would really be, again, just the, any cost of living increase we might give, South Carolina retirement system. That's, that's about all that is. They have a request, a personnel request for some temporary positions.
Is that included in this?
That is included in there, yes, sir. For the new fitness facility. And then they have capital requests. They have one item, they had originally requested an item, a truck, but, but they decided that it was not necessary in the shades for the swim. And that, they are not on, they're not actually on this list, they're in the capital budget.
Capital, but.
Yep, they're in here, but it's not on this list. They had requested a truck and then said they felt like they could do another year of that.
Okay.
I would like to, I mentioned it last year, and would like kind of entertain the, all the, the same thing this year. And that would be to raise the participation fees at least five dollars. For the cost of playing sports and other activities.
Something we can put on the list and, and, uh, motion list and see, see how it passes. It is something we talked about. Put it on the motion list and see how it goes. All right.
All right. Then next you'll see a couple of departments, one hundred oh-five-six, and we have three of those. Again, we talked a little bit earlier about how our transit department's typically budgeted in fund two oh-six. And we've moved some of that cost up into our general fund. Mainly to keep in two oh-six what's associated with the grant. So in previous years, even though it was budgeted in fund two oh-six, we would make a, a general fund transfer into that fund to cover what the grant didn't cover. And so now we're just separating those costs. So again, when you get down to the two oh-sixes, you'll see some big reductions. And we, we've done EMS and Fire, and so we'll flip on to page two.
Office assistant, transit.
Transit, office assistant, yes. Brad, they've requested, I think their temporary employee be made full-time.
I think right now, she.
It was in the front of the blue book. Probably on page two or three.
Two. I'll read y'all the explanation for the need. It says transit does have a temporary position right now. The person works about twenty hours a week. She'd like to make this position an office assistant slash dispatcher. And she listed out, let's see, about five duties here that they'll, would perform. To include assisting counting revenue, responsible for receiving requests from public transportation in the county, and for efficiently dispatching buses as appropriate, monitoring the vehicles as they are en route, perform duties of dispatcher when the main dispatcher is out, file paperwork, prepare supply orders, key count at the end of shift, and make sure all paperwork in vehicles and buses are clean. And this is another one that was, has traditionally been a full-time position, but was cut back.
Who do these duties today?
They're just split up within the staff. They have, you have a director, you have a dispatcher, and you have a financial person. But when the dispatcher is out, you really don't have anybody else to answer the phone or, you know, dispatch or whatever. If the others are busy on a normal operating schedule, I think that was the point.
And the dispatcher. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
The dispatcher is also the one that prepares the daily schedule for the routes. So there's not a backup really for that. And presently, the dispatcher is the one, because that schedule has to be done on a daily basis and modified when medical rides are needed, right the, in the same day, sometimes the next day. And so presently, that person normally takes the work home with them in order to ensure that that schedule is done. So our citizens can get to, to their doctor's offices.
One, one of the things is, you know, I guess the last four or five years, we've had four or five directors, right?
Yes. We've had a couple.
Okay, so is this, is this role, is to assist the director so that we won't have so much turnover?
It is to perform essential duties, not necessarily to learn all the additional roles associated with having the director. But it is to assist in all areas, I mean, it's essential.
And we did cut this position, correct?
Yeah, at one time, for several years, it was a full-time position and for whatever reason, it went to a temporary position. That position was needed as, as a full-time. And like I said, the present person that's doing it, I mean, she is taking the work home with her in order to get the schedules and things like that done.
Question, but it's, it's around the bigger labor issue. Have we looked at the county as a whole? And see how we could combine jobs or do stuff? Because tonight, how, we already got our salaries fifty-seven percent, fifty-six, fifty-seven percent, salary in friends. And it, and it looked like we just, we keep adding.
If you notice with this particular position and a number of others, in the past, we did do this. And a lot of these are positions that used to be in place, that now people are requesting them to be back. Because in the past, we did take a look and we cut a lot of these positions. We cut a lot of full-time, made them part-time, we cut some completely out that had, and they've, again, as Brad has mentioned and Laura, these are old positions that we just haven't funded in a long time, essentially we cut them in the past. And now their, their people are coming back and requesting that they could be put back in place. Most of them we have declined, but there's a few like this particular one, we have brought up for y'all's consideration.
Yeah, one of the things we don't need is, is keep current, have constant turnover with the transit director.
That is a problem, we need to get that department stable.
Yeah.
Council's got anything else? Add it to the list.
So that was, we were on transit there. All right, I think that takes us now to the museum. We'll skip on past all those fire stations and then the museum is about midway down. It's a small increase. Again, it's, it's about a two percent increase and that's, that's going to really be the South Carolina retirement system and any kind of raise we, that's determined to give. And then the soil and water conservation district would be the same.
And I'll just back up one quick second, Ms. Bertha just texted me and asked, the part-time employee that takes the work home, do we pay her overtime? That's a good question.
I think it's a full-time person you refer to.
Okay.
She gets, she gets paid for working.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, she's getting, she's getting paid.
Okay.
That's a good point, we don't need to put ourselves in that position either.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, because she's taking the schedule home and if, if for some reason she gets sick or whatever, somebody's got to go.
If you notice, I tried to leave that alone. I didn't ask any question about what Laura said that one.
Yeah. Okay, okay, sorry, Ann.
That's all right. That kind of, that's, that's all of our general fund departments, that'll take us down. Down into our other funds and the main departments here that we usually talk about are our transit department. And again, as I mentioned, you can see down here in fund two oh-six, you can see all those negatives where we saw some of those positives up in the general fund. And that's just where we're budgeting that general fund cost, in the general fund and, and trying to associate what's in fund two oh-six strictly with the grant. Oh, and the sheriff's child support position, I'm sorry, I skipped over that one, that's two oh-five. That again is a, a small four percent increase and I think that's directly related to the retirement system and any kind of raise that's determined.
I'm sorry, did we go over the bus wrap, capital for transit, I'm sorry.
We need to do that.
I'm sorry, I, I know I've got you bouncing all over left and right.
I don't think the bus wrap.
No, it's not. No, it's not. Yeah.
So transit had included in there, and they had, had requested three bus wraps. And I think we decided on, it's like two. The photographic and audio, audiovisual equipment for buildings, which we decided taken out. That was funded by the grant.
Yeah, that's the grant, they requested for the grant to cover that and, and they agreed.
And then they requested photographic and audiovisual equipment for the vehicles.
I should have asked this early, but I apologize. Did we ever decide what image we portraying with these wraps?
They did.
Yeah, it's just something that was already approved.
Yeah, I thought it was, I just didn't remember what it was.
It was, it wasn't implemented, so.
Okay.
Implementation of it.
Is there any questions on that capital?
No, ma'am.
I think that actually concludes all of our capital stuff, so we can.
They don't have any, I'm sorry, they don't have any photographic and audiovisual equipment now inside the vehicles?
I think they do.
There's issues with the.
I want to say there was issues because we keep having issues with one or two riders.
It's, it's, what we have in there is simply not working and it's getting replaced. And again, the grant's covering that.
All right, so that, that takes us back. Most of these special revenue funds that you see, like in the two hundreds, would be, you know, we would receive a grant. Their, their estimates based on previous years. If, if the amount we receive changes, of course, the amount we spend would change as well. Skipping a couple of those, the next one that actually houses. Would be in the clerk of court incentive, which we, we don't really, that's a, a neutral budget. The victim assistance, that houses an employee. It decreased a little bit, but that was one of our appropriations, one of our allocations to our agencies that used to be funded by that department, no longer is. So it'll be in our general fund when we talk about that. The, the two-two-four and two-two-five, our vehicle replacement and capital improvement funds, that's where the stuff on our capital budget is. You see decreases there, but I think we already explained that we tried to squeeze that budget as tight as possible. Down to our two forty-one, our W I O A program, there, there are some increases there, but again, that's a grant-funded program. Yeah, and, and one of the salary areas on that, I think there was a data entry duplication, but that'll be adjusted. We'll look at that and adjust that before we get a final draft. Something new is two fifty-four, and that's Fairfield Forward. So that is the position that'll be funded by the Duke Endowment. And that would be entirely funded by that grant, but that is a brand-new, brand-new expense there. And again, our capital, four oh-four, our capital projects building contingency, we've discussed that in our capital budget. And again, it is reduced as we've tried to squeeze that down. We've got some of our industrial parks, of course, we budget a little bit there. We've got some wastewater treatment plans there, some land money and of course, some engineering and other costs associated with that project. Our public works and solid waste budgets, those include the capital equipment requested by those departments. And then our hospital and library fund. And that takes us to the end. Well, do y'all have any questions about any of those? We went through those kind of fast, but.
I'd like to hear that, end.
What we got?
We'll go back to the allocations, yeah.
Yeah, the allocation sheet. Last, last one.
Yeah, it's a, a separate sheet, it's just a landscape notebook paper sheet.
Is it still inside this big binder?
It's in this binder, yeah. Let's see, we do have a table of contents, I guess, we could refer to.
What page is it?
I'm trying to find my table of contents. It is section three.
Section three.
Yep.
Okay.
And what we tried to do on this sheet, because we were trying to keep our budget as low as possible, you will see that the, the adopted budget for this current fiscal year, we pretty much just kept it the same. Unless they requested a decrease in the budget from the previous year. And then you will see those decreases. Central Midlands Council of Government is, is a small increase, but that's like, that's a membership due.
One, one thing I would like for council to consider is the food bank this year. As you all know, with the COVID nineteen going on, you still got a lot of families that don't have food. I would like to do a monthly allocation if possible to maybe. Supplies for families. I just want council to consider it.
Come up for a period of time?
Yeah.
What you talking about, a thousand a month or something like that?
Maybe a thousand, yeah.
You would want it to start now rather than next fiscal year?
Yeah, I would want it to start now if possible. Something for council to consider, just a thought.
And maybe agree to like six months or something?
Yeah. I do know that a lot of families are, uh, in need, you know?
We can't afford it now.
Yeah. I know we are cutting, but you know, we.
Yeah, I mean, I would, we can't, I guess we can't do nothing about it right now, but I would agree to it.
I hate to throw that monkey wrench on y'all, it's just, it was just a thought that come to me today, so.
And I wanna say that administration did reach out to the food bank.
That is correct, yes.
A month ago or so to let them know that, um, if they were in need of anything, to please contact the county.
Are they a 501(c)(3)?
No, they're not.
Or would it be a problem if we did?
That's something we have looked at. And, um, when we kind of, um, took ownership of this 501(c)(3) Fairfield Forward, we thought that it might make sense to try to roll the food bank under that some kind of way or put them under that umbrella. Because they're not a 501(c)(3), and that makes it difficult for them to get donations from other organizations. So we were looking at reaching out and kind of trying to help restructure them to some extent, so they became more viable and could get other donations. And it makes it easier for us to deal with them also because they're an official organization at that point.
Okay.
FAFIA United is 501(c)(3), if you wanted to go through them.
Again, it would be nice if they were under some type of 501(c)(3) umbrella organization.
It'll kind of give us a little more.
It would.
Yeah, and so if you wanted to use them, I'm sure they'd be glad to do it. Um, I got a question on, about FAFIA, um, FAFIA, um, Behavioral Health Services. Um, I would like to see them move, um, from 69938 to at least, um, um, who that, uh, at least, I think it's 265. At least that much.
But, uh, Ms. Paul, sorry.
Chairman, on that food bank issue.
Yes.
I mean, I would just like to make sure that whoever we are giving the food to are really in desperate need of, of the food and not just anybody's pulling up there, taking away from people who's really in need. I don't know how they, what kind of system they use to determine, but maybe come up with some kind of system to make sure that we are really, uh, giving it to, to, to people that need it.
Now, now our church, um, know that donation, saying we take up food at least once, um, at least once a year to take up there and take boxes of the, um, the Fairfield County Fire Service do the same thing. And now they have a pretty good means, um, a mean testing of how they, how they do that. But, um, pretty much, it's just like all these other food banks. When people go up there and ask for food, most of the time, they give it to them. So I, I don't know how we wanna do that any differently. They just, they just do it. And I know the Rotary sometimes do it too.
I just know you got a lot of people in need.
Right, and I, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna get into, get into business dictating how they gonna do it based on, because they've been doing the FAF. And just let them do it like they normally do it, but just give them the means whereby they can do it.
Whatever we come up, I just, I would.
Because it's embarrassing to people, they ask for food and you don't need it. Some people might do it, but you know, if, if they do it, you know, I can't be responsible for that.
Okay. Behavioral Health, we did have the request from Councilman Bell. Do we wanna put that on the motions list as additional, what, 26, 5?
Yes.
Yes, put on the motions.
Put on the motions list.
And I know the solicitor has requested to come to present. Is there anybody else you would like to come to present? So we can have, get those scheduled. At our next meeting, either they come or telephone call.
Any questions on any of these that you would like us to request them to come?
Um, um, if we can't, you know, I, I would like for Mr. Mr. Kennedy to talk about why he need the, the money.
From, from what I gather, it was basically cleaning, correct?
Yeah, if, if you look at it, you, you, and we've talked about it, uh, i- if you go through it, um, it's a lot of stuff that they was, um, getting, that they know can get because it's not a county on board.
I'll clean it for that.
Well, Mr. Kennedy reached out to me, says I'm on his board. He reached out to me and said he would be fine with just the irregular amount that he usually gets and an additional 26,000 that he would do away with the other amount he was requesting. So, I mean, I don't, I don't see a need for him coming because all he's asking for above the, the regular amount that we give him is just $26,000.
Okay, so, okay, so we, 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 we can agree on the 26,000?
We can put on the motions.
Put it on the motions.
Those on the motions list for everybody to vote.
Yeah, we'll put it on the motions list.
So to clarify, he's, should I invite Fairfield Behavioral Health or not? They have one thing, yes, one thing.
I don't, I don't see a need for him to come. I mean, I, I'm, I'm well aware, he does a great job, but we.
We can represent.
We talking about finances.
Okay, so just the, out of the entire agency list, just the solicitor? He's requested, is there anybody else?
We had, we did have two new requests, um, they're down at the bottom. And we didn't add those ends since they were brand-new and we were holding the others flat. Um, we put them there for them to be at y'all's request.
What, what was the solicitor's request for again? It was 10,000 for what?
A drug court.
Drug court.
And then that, I think that latter.
Be in the latter also.
Yeah, the latter, the salary latter.
Um, Mr. Taylor, you said something about this latter, this, this salary latter last year.
If we.
He asked, this is something he brings up every year, is this salary ladder, what he calls.
But is, is there something we ought to be doing? I guess if it had been you, you'd have recommended it, huh?
Right, I, the solicitor, again, he's been at, an advocate for his department, his employees, and he's asking for additional wages, again, so he can, as, as we would all say, we're trying to attract, um, qualified applicants and keep our, our good people in the positions. And that's what he's trying to do, is, is just move his people up as they prove themselves. And so that's his argument, that he wants to be able to, to fund this salary ladder, again, to keep qualified candidates and attract new ones. And, uh, we have pushed back on it in the past.
I just want council to keep in mind, we cutting county agencies almost to the bare minimum. And we have outside agencies coming in and requesting.
Well, I would also say it's not the county's fault. That the state isn't funding him like they should be. And the state had a huge surplus this year. So, I mean, I don't think it's the county's responsibility to pick up what the state's not funding.
Coming for the solicitor. The Pine Tree Players. Was that a recommendation?
No, sir, we did not. The, the two new ones at the bottom, the John Martin Primary Health Care Center and the Pine Tree Players, we didn't put forth a recommendation. We put them there for y'all to, um, give us the guidance on whether you want to hear from them to explain their request or, um, put them in there or.
Are, are we interested in funding them at all?
That's one of those things, again.
Yeah, you're again, we're trying to cut the budget.
We are, but when we get accommodations and hospitality tax, when that starts coming in.
I'm okay.
That, that's something that has to go to organizations like that. You can't just spend it in your general fund. So I would recommend that we wait and see when we have accommodation hospitality tax and then maybe offer them something.
Does council, does council want the solicitor to come? I'm okay, I don't, he doesn't need to come in my opinion.
If you're gonna keep it the same, you don't need to get him to come?
Okay, yeah.
And I guess John Martin Primary Health.
Hmm, no, no.
I think the only thing left maybe was our fee schedule, and that's it?
Mm-hmm. Fee schedule, yeah.
Yeah, just, just the changes on that, and I think we're pretty much after that.
Yeah, we need to talk about, I guess, when we go meet.
Give five more minutes? I'm watching, I'm watching the clock.
Oh, yeah, wh- wh- when y'all wanna meet, y'all wanna try to meet next Monday?
That's cool.
Three o'clock afternoon? I'm just get, I'm just messing.
Not again.
What, what time y'all wanna meet next, next Monday?
Let's do about six o'clock.
Five.
Four, five. I mean, um, you got people like, um, Mr. Trapp, uh, you don't get off at four.
Five o'clock, we all right?
Six. Let's compromise at five thirty.
Is he, is he gonna come though, I mean?
I don't know, I'm just trying to make things available for everybody. I don't know whether he coming or not.
Yeah, the earliest I could make it would be five ten, let's do five thirty.
Yeah, so let's compromise at five thirty.
Five thirty, yeah, five thirty. Do five thirty. I just don't wanna be in here all night, so.
Like tonight.
Well, okay, we're talking about a budget work. The only thing left we have to go over is the fee schedule.
Okay.
Say, say it again, Laura.
We're talking about scheduling another budget work session, but basically.
We, we.
We're done with the exception of going over real quickly just, uh, some changes in our fee schedule. Other than that, that's it. And then we just have to have time to, uh, change, you know, prepare a motions list. And that has to be voted on during a regular county council meeting. And after we go over that motions list, then we can go back and whatever y'all vote on, we can go back in and then adjust the budget.
We gotta do the outside agencies, right?
Well, y- you just said that, yeah. You didn't make any recommendate changes except for FAFIA Behavioral Health Services. And then you just said you didn't want anyone to attend, it wasn't necessary for anyone to attend. Yeah, we can do that, we can do that now.
Need to, let's do it.
Okay.
Well, let's go and get it out the way. Go and get it out the way.
And where's the fee schedule? Do we have it?
Yeah, you already have it.
The packet of information you had that had the graphs in it is included in that.
Yeah, they already had, he is.
Yeah. Sounds good.
All right, is everybody ready?
It was in the package that Mr. Taylor sent out?
Mm-hmm, that had Mr. Taylor's budget letter and the graphs.
All right.
All right. Um, so just the, anything that's changed, we've got it highlighted in yellow. Um, if there is no change on their department request column, it just says there was no change requested. Um, the items that changed under the department request is actually the old value, the new value's over with the, with all the other fees. So really, if we flip first to page three, and a couple of these actually have been voted on along the way at, at other county council meetings and things. We're just updating this master document. So I believe the adoption fees for cats and dogs is one of those items that had previously been voted on. So that would be updated to $85. The solid waste fee, which is subject to change anyway, we usually include that language, um, is about $57. There's a waste tire permit that need to be added in for $120. Under the wood chip.
Explain this waste, um, sign for me.
I would say Brad might explain that.
It's, it's actually a waste tire fee. Um, right now, we don't charge for anybody bringing waste tires. Well, I'm gonna rephrase, commercial vendors bring them for free. This will be charging the commercial vendors a per-ton rate for, for dumping tires.
Okay, just like, you remember, I, I had that guy, um, somebody dumped some tires on his face, he wanted to move them off there.
Yeah, that, that, we, we don't charge citizens, no, sir.
Just a question, how much money did we spend this year on recycling? Waste tires and batteries?
The whole.
Yeah.
Oh, um.
I know, I know the year before last, we spent over a million.
Well, just the municipal garbage is right at a million. And that's not counting electronics, tires and everything else.
Right here.
A lot of the money we got going out for recycling. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Um, down to the wood chipping facility, under the yard debris per ton, we've just got that changed to $20 per ton. It had been, um, there were several charges kind of based on the truck size. It ranged from 20 to $40 per load. So we've just made that a flat $20 per ton regardless of the truck size.
Oh, well, we, that's a good price, 'cause that's what we need. Twenty-two dollars.
Um, then we can flip to page five. Down close to the bottom, under the recreation fees, the dance fees changed from $20 to five and under is 30, six and over is 35. And that was actually based on what we're having pay the instructor. So that, that moved a little bit based on that cost. And on page six, we've added, so continuation of the recreation center. The Jenkins Monticello Community Fitness Room is $10 monthly. And then the Boykin Recreation Center Fitness Room is $20 monthly. They were not listed on the previous schedule. Down at the bottom of that page, under the delinquent tax collector, we've got return check fees for $25 and copies per page, 30 cents per page. And those are, they were not listed under the delinquent tax collector before, but they're consistent with other departments within the county. And then on the very last page, under the coroner's office, I think all these fees existed. They had just not been listed in this document. And therefore, coroner's report, toxicology report, autopsy reports, and then a cremation permit, photos, $2 each. And then the cremation return fee, $300, which is consistent with what we're charged to have body cremated. Y'all have any questions about those?
The, uh, fee for recreation that we wanna add.
Yes.
To the motions list at this point.
Thank you.
And that, we're good.
Council got anything else? Big enough, I hope you beat us.
Do anybody disagree with that? Could Doug get Paul to say?
Well, we put it on the motions list.
If they didn't disagree, we could.
Is there a proposed fee that was put on the motions list?
I think it's, I think it's 20 now. Whatever it is, I, I would like to increase it by $5. I think it's 20th or 25.
About to, to 25, okay.
Anything else from council?
I'm still unsure about some of these, um, outside agencies. So do I need to contact y'all in like the next day and see what my concerns are?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else we get out of here? I don't think the next council meeting is too many. The next original.
May 11. May 11, I believe.
Second reading of the bill will be.
Not a, and then a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Second. We moved in private the second, all those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.